What?
I just turned it on.
Like, how many, how long ago?
Ten seconds.
All the mics are hot. We didn't realize that.
I'm still, I'm still paying the phone.
Oh, you're not hooked in yet to the... We are trying to express how important it is to be there.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for making some understanding. Again, something that we need to take care of before meeting. So if I can get everybody to get to their seats. Just before we get started. Mayor Coach Ken is out of his name. And so, it seemed weird that both Mayor and Mayor Coach Ken would be somewhere everywhere. But I'm here. But if I finally need to leave, I am going to have to pass over to this speaker just to kind of continue on. Hopefully, I'm going to be here for all the votes and stuff that kind of brought up today. I don't want to be as heavily dedicated as my name is. Okay. Thank you all for being here. The city has a meeting in November eight, two thousand and ten, under order. These are the times indicated next to the agenda items for approximately square times only. Please turn off all cell phones and papers from duration of the meeting. Your city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Taub?
Here.
Mayor Coach Ken Snyder? Councilman Moreno?
Here.
Councilman Benson?
Here.
Councilwoman Carson?
Here.
Councilwoman Teeter? Councilman Johnson?
Here.
Councilman McAldowney?
Here.
Councilman Bullock?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a forum?
Thank you. Just, are you going to talk or try to introduce yourself?
Sure. Actually, I have a couple things to say.
Before we start, I'd like to work... Mr. Flaherty, let's just speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Just really quickly, as you know, this is a different format. And we have staff, you know, many of you have mentioned, you know, seeing staff kind of balance their notebooks and different things and trying to write and stuff and take notes. And so, we listen to you and actually put some tables here because then we'll be able to use a table. These microphones are, have just come in. And we mentioned it a couple of weeks ago that we're going to try tonight as a new format. Things in store, you may have noticed some cameras up by the back of the dais over to the right. There's one in the back room. And there'll be another one over on this side. So we'll be able to cover all the different camera angles for the listening audience. And basically be able to focus on a speaker who's speaking. Also, want to let you know that we tried this in the budget retreat. We tried it again in a budget retreat about two years ago. And it had mixed reviews. It was much more positive feedback after the budget retreat in September. And so, I think some of the, some of the things that we'll figure out as we go along are if you want to speak, say, Councilmember Moreno wants to speak. It's going to probably make sure that the mayor, or you wave your hand. I think somebody mentioned at doctor talks, sometimes they wave their hand to make sure that they know they want to speak. So we'll, we'll figure those things out as we go. But I think it's a, it's a work and a product in motion. So it's really encouraging. I actually really enjoy the format. So hopefully, we'll adopt it and rule it in. And any kind of feedback you have, feel free to do that over the next coming months. Thank you.
Thank you. Could the audience please rise and roll to silence and join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance? And I could request some good applause for Mark from the mic.
This is the life of the United States of America. And if you're a Republican, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every due and justice for all.
Okay. At this time, well, since you have to pass your microphone to the audience, we're not... Paul Dollar? Danny Thomas?
Danny Thomas?
Troy Woodmore with United Power? Rich Zollis with United Power? Yano Seven?
Mayor T. Don?
Ellen?
Sean Gordon?
Joey Bishop?
Keen Lefell? Ed Stampa with the Senior Crime Investigation Investigator for City Commerce City?
As we learned from United's tip?
John Archer? Rudy Javis?
Andrew Chavis, City Commerce City Public Works, Street Department?
John Lucero? Public Works? John Lucero, Public Works?
Sejatovic?
Mark Lewis?
Allison Hamilton, Krucky Sports?
Cam Riley?
Christine Alonso?
Sharon Richardson?
Lynn Howell, City Manager's Office?
John Howard, Information Technology?
Thank you very much. Okay, there's, there were two public topic rosters that remain available at the table of entrance of the council chambers for those who wish to address council. One of the rosters is for non-agenda items and second is for adaction items, listed on the agenda. When I call your name, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You're reminded we will be limited to three minutes. Council, please be reminded that these are not to engage in discussion debate, but may ask clarifying questions and express concern when appropriate. City manager will generally assign staff members to get necessary information to solve whatever issues there may be. The first person I have is Ken Riley. Can you move, sir?
Good evening, Mayor's members of the council, my address is three thousand, East one hundred and twelve, North Plain, Colorado. I'm Executive Director of ASME Council Seventy-Six, State of Colorado. However, I'm reporting tonight as the newly elected Regional Transportation Director for District K. On November second, the voters in North Plain, Thornton, Brighton, Commerce City elected me by a sixty percent margin to represent our community. I look forward to working with each of the Commerce City elected officials to ensure the transportation needs are met. I especially want to thank and acknowledge members of councilmen, uh, city members, Carson and Moreno for their early support and endorsement. Lastly, I'd like to thank council for creating an ordinance, granting collective bargaining rights to its employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moreno? I just wanted to thank you again for coming to introduce yourself tonight. And again, congratulations on finding work.
I just want to say the same. Congratulations again, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Next person I have listed is Christine Alonso?
I'm sorry, I thought that was mine.
Oh, okay. You didn't want to talk to us?
No.
Okay. That's fine, thank you. It's nice to see you here anyway. Okay, there's only one set of minutes before council this evening for approval. There's minutes for the meeting in October twenty-fifth, two thousand and ten. Before voting, I have minutes. I'll make a motion to allow Councilman Johnson, Councilman McAldowney, Councilwoman Teeter to abstain from voting because of their excused absence. I'll now entertain a motion. Mr. Flaherty?
Move to excuse Councilman Johnson, Councilwoman Teeter, Councilman McAldowney, voting on minutes.
I have a motion and a second to excuse the three councilpeople. I know it's going to have to be really good. And it's going to be a little tough, but it's going to be okay. I have a motion to allow them to abstain from voting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the same. Motion passes. I'll now take a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty-fifth, two thousand and ten. Mr. Flaherty?
Move to approve the minutes of October twenty-fifth, two thousand and ten.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of October twenty-fifth. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, request a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the same. Motion passes. Thank you very much. There's only one ordinance this evening for a second reading. It's ordinance eighteen forty, an ordinance amending Chapter Two of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code by adding Article Five to Chapter Two of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code regarding collective bargaining for certain applying Commerce City employees. Does council have any further questions or discussions regarding the ordinance? Seeing none, I'll be open for a motion. Ms. Carson?
Motion to approve ordinance eighteen forty. Ordinance eighteen forty.
Okay. Mr. Benson? Second motion. I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance eighteen forty. The city attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "An Ordinance Amending Chapter Two of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code by Adding Article Five to Chapter Two of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code Regarding Collective Bargaining for Certain Refined Commerce City Employees."
I have a motion and a second. City attorney has read the title. Request the roll call, please.
Moreno? Yes. Benson? Yes. Carson? Yes. Teeter?
Yes.
Johnson? No. McAldowney? Yes. Bullock? Yes. Mayor Taub? No.
The vote is six to two. Motion passes. Thank you very much. That's the end of our council business. So we'll be going into the study section next. The first one is Prairie Gateway update. Now I ask the city manager, Jerry Flaherty, invite staff to come forward to discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask Brittany Morris, Economic Development Director, to introduce herself.
Good evening. Mayor members of council, Brittany Morris, Director of Economic Development. Let me just get the council presentation. T W. Tonight, I'm going to be giving an update on the brand and marketing of the second phase of development on Prairie Gateway. If you recall, I presented to you three names for the second phase a few weeks ago. And tonight, we'll be unveiling the collective decision by Krucky Sports Enterprises and the City of Commerce City team. But quickly, I will introduce our team members. Representing Commerce City is myself. And our team members will stand up there in the audience. Chris Kramer with planning. Aaron Sterling, Public Works. For Krucky Sports Enterprises, we have Otto Mailey. And with Dick's Sporting Goods Park, we have Jeff Flush, who I just saw walk in. Yes, and Allison Hamilton. And then with Jones Lang LaSalle's group, we have Mark Lucas in attendance. And then John Freycraft and Mitch Datz is part of that team as well. And Norris Denine and Zinkum DeLassez Architects, Mark Keever and Andy Warr. Here is our marketing branding mission, to create an environment that drives business, piques curiosity, and improves the lives of those who live and work in the community by harvesting the emotion of the competitive sports and recreation enthusiasts from Colorado and around the globe in order to create a one-of-a-kind, large-scale, mixed-use destination. Our business and marketing objectives were to create excitement, leverage the collective, develop new business opportunities, leave a legacy, reposition the project, develop strategic messaging, and drive awareness. And I should have mentioned, the Tracy Marketing Group is who assisted Jones Lang LaSalle and Krucky in the city on the south. Here are the challenges that we went through during our last presentation. There were no existing marketing strategies for the property. As you know, I think it was two I C S Es, International Council Shopping Centers, ago, we had the opportunity to visit with Mr. Krucky and relate to him our frustrations of not having an existing marketing strategy for the second phase of development of the property. From that meeting, they ended up selecting Jones Lang LaSalle to help us with the marketing brokerage services for the property and assigned this project to Otto Mailey and to Jeff Flush. Prairie Center confusion, we also talked about this last, last time. Many members of the retail community believe that we are talking about Prairie Center in Brighton. Because that project was up and running before this one, the second phase of development, it's actually became pretty well-known in the beverage community. And we ran into a couple of issues of talking to prospects where they think we're actually talking about Brighton. Brand awareness is low for the property. And the Krucky name itself does not leverage to its full potential. The sub-brand issue, we have a lot of different brands on this property. It's known for Dick's Sporting Goods Park, for the Colorado Rapids, Commerce City Civic Center, and of course, the Rocky Mountain National Wildlife Refuge. We're dealing with a huge issue here where we have many sub-brands, but not an entire brand from the property itself. Our key messaging when marketing the site, we have an amazing central location. We are at the core of the metro area. We also are fast-growing. This is indicative of Commerce City doubling in population in the past ten years. We are a part of a fast-growing area. Easy access, located within ten minutes from D I A, eight minutes from downtown Denver. We have a strategic location by several major highways. We also have a attractive business environment here in Commerce City, as well as the Rocky Mountain lifestyle. The main recommendation we have before you for the second phase of development on Prairie Gateway is Victory Crossing, the fusion of sports, commerce, and wildlife. Victory comes from victorious, which is at the core of the brand positioning for the development, and references the desired outcome of this unique and powerful public-private partnership. Crossing refers to the intersection of sports, commerce/civic, and wildlife. Together, they symbolize the winning convergence of the sports, civic, business, and wildlife components of the development. Our brand position is victorious, and you can see here, there's four different spotlights. Civic, elevate your community, energize, active, can-do. U S Fish and Wildlife, elevate your curiosity, learning, sustainable, pioneering. Sports and Entertainment, elevate your game, high-performance, winning, celebratory. Business, elevate your business, forward-thinking, innovative, central. Here's some drafts of the marketing materials we'll be printing in the next few weeks. This includes information about Victory Crossing. It will have information on the development, the community, sports, and recreation, and of course, the Wildlife Refuge. Here's a mock-up of what our website will look like for Victory Crossing, as well as your iPhone app. We can get an iPhone app for the development. Next steps, we will be presenting to you the design guidelines on December thirteenth. The aggressive marketing campaign starts now. And then the International Council Shopping Centers is May twenty-second through May twenty-fifth, two thousand and eleven, in Las Vegas. And with that, I do want to call up a couple of the team representatives just to make a few remarks about this name change. And then also get your questions, answer any questions or concerns you may have. And first, I will call up Jeff Flush from the Colorado Rapids.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Thank you very much for the introduction. Just simply put, we're very excited about this name. We're doing our best on the pitch as the Rapids, trying to have more games here, more victories in the season here. One of Commander, one of the team, J L L, Stink Melos, Tracy Marketing Group, Norris Design, Cooper and I, for all of what we've been doing on this. And we're excited. Obviously, it's two thousand and ten, and we've been partnered with you for quite some time. And I think we're all very excited to get this building to the next phase of development and reengage with some bold faces we haven't seen in a while to get going and have this region's potential. So certainly, I'm part of this company as well. I know, I'm sure you know everything. Certainly, you have a good question.
I have a question. Is Karen now going to stay with us?
Well, I'm centrally focused on the Rapids. It's fun a lot this Saturday, so...
It was just a joke.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, good. I hope I answered it. Really, so thank you.
Mayor, Council, thanks again for your support. Mark Lucas with J L L. We, I have engaged in the project, certainly as one of most of you have, for a change just earlier this year. But I can tell you, we're very excited about this name and the brand. I live it every day. There is confusion with Prairie Center and Victory Crossing. It's going to make a splash. It's going to be very clear. And it's going to stand out. The timing is also good from the standpoint of the market, showing some early signs of recovery. And frankly, we're seeing demand for this project even without the marketing. We're just, we're that much more optimistic about what this is going to bring in the next sixty, one hundred and twenty days. So, I want to thank Krucky, Commerce City, great support, and a great partnership. And we're going to do very well, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't know if Allison or John want to say anything? All right, good. Okay. Allison does. Just want to hear my accent. Yeah, nice to see you, Council. Allison Hamilton, Dick's Sporting Goods Park, I'd like to echo what Jeff and Mark were saying. And, you know, we believe this really tells the story about what we're trying to do here on the site. Trying to pass with this nice standards team that we're developing for you to see next month. And yeah, simply put, this tells the story of what, of what we are and further what we, what we want to be. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to close by making sure, we did make one change from the last time we presented this information to you. If you'll recall, it was Victory Crossing, the fusion of sports, commerce, and recreation. And we took a lot of your comments and made sure that we stressed the importance of the Wildlife Refuge. And that's why we needed Victory Crossing, the fusion of sports, commerce, and wildlife, because that's a major piece to this development.
Any comments from council? Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Flaherty, if you'd like to invite Mr. Flaherty more and Mr. Gillos up from the United Power?
I'd be happy to. We've got a great relationship with United Power, and certainly, these two individuals are key to that. And I absolutely welcome Troy and Richard.
Thank you, Jerry. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brittany, great presentation. We at United Power enjoy working with Brittany and Liz and several other staff members on numerous projects throughout the Metro North area, namely with the Metro North Chamber of Commerce. So, very hopeful that things go well with your Victory project. There's only one problem, as I see it, with it, Rich, and it's not in our territory. Probably can't change that, but good for the city and for the residents of Commerce City. Our duty tonight, if you will, is to just give an update about the relationship between United Power and Commerce City. As many of you know, we serve the northern portions of your fine city and have for a number of years, especially, were involved with the development of those areas. And I've been pleased to have a long relationship and have had a long-term franchise agreement with the city. And it was one of actually the first ones that we entered into when we began doing joint franchises where part of the city was served by Estelle or another utility, and another part of the city was served by us. And many years ago, Commerce City was the first to take the chance and embrace having United Power. I think we've had a great relationship. Probably only a couple of people will remember those days in the room, as I looked at Mr. Clemens and Mr. Gaylor, and maybe a few others. But I was around too, wasn't involved. But we've had indeed, Jerry, a great relationship. And we're thrilled to be here. I will ask Rich to introduce himself. He has a few comments as the district representative for this area. And then I've got eight slides to run through here, and then we'll have a little bit of time for some questions, if you so desire. So, Rich?
Mayor, Council, and staff, I'm very proud to be here this evening representing United Power and you, Commerce City. I'm your district representative. I'm a forty-one-year employee of United Power and a five-year representative of Commerce City, of which I've had a great time. Have a great staff to work with. I've enjoyed it, had good times with them. And I hope for more time with you. Thank you.
Now, we'll go ahead and begin the presentation, and Rich is here to answer the tough questions, and I'm here to answer the easy ones, Mr. Mayor, so... Let's just do a little bit of a summary about who we are, because I know there's a lot of new residents in Commerce City, some new council members. So we'll just run through kind of the cooperative difference in who United Power really is. There are three types of electric utility companies in the state of Colorado. There are the best-run utilities, such as Black Hills in the, in the Quavo area, and then obviously, Excel Energy. There are municipal utilities, where cities have their own utility departments, such as Colorado Springs and Fort Collins, and many other small communities on the eastern plains. And then there are cooperative utilities, and we are cooperative. We're guided by the seven cooperative principles. We are regulated by eleven-member group of board of directors that are elected from the membership. And so, we are cooperative through and through. We do not have stockholders, but we have member owners, which are the same people that receive their electric power from us. Our board members serve three-year terms, rotating, and we have eleven members on our board of directors. Our annual meeting is in April of every year, and that's when one of the board members in each district is up for election. And that will be the case again this spring in our April annual meeting. Now, cooperative difference, a couple of things that make us different is we don't operate to make money. We operate to serve and serve only. If we do have a little money left at the end of the year, it's not profit, it's called margin. And that's put into formula, and then capital credits are given back out to the members based upon their tenure and their amount of usage on our power lines. And I know that, I made a presentation with the capital credit check here last year, and I think we had more of a pride of one this year with our CEO visiting with some of your senior staff about that. One of the things, even though we do have a bargaining unit at our company, we have a very innovative compensation package. And we have part of our raise, raises tied to performance of our service reliability index. And we measure ourselves against excels. And if we meet the certain criteria each and every year, a portion of the raises, whether you're a bargaining unit or not, help with the compensation changes each and every year, which is pretty innovative in our industry. We're really proud of that. Our line department has embraced that, and they know that when the phone rings and power's out, that all hands on deck is very, very important. Our response times are tracked and checked by those eleven regulators, our board members each and every month, as well as a number of very important indices for United Power tracked on the scorecard. Where do we serve? Well, we're in six front-range counties. If you look at the map, it's, it's not to scale, but the bottom portion of our service territory is certainly not that close to Brimfield and Thornton, but that is our mountain district. We have a non-contiguous mountain district of about forty-eight hundred customer members. And Mountainous Boulder, Golden, and Yopen County actually serve the Moppa Tunnel, kind of at the end of our lines up in our mountain district. Basically, it's property between Central City and Boulder and Golden that is very, very rocky and very, very rural. And we do have an office up there... rocky and very, very rural, and we do have an office up there and outpost, and have a number of challenges in serving that area with the wind and the snow issues. Otherwise, the bulk of our members, over 62,000 or so are in our plains district, and obviously Commerce City has a big bulk of that 67,000 meter count with about 9,100 customer members or meters served in your Paris City. Our franchise that we signed many years ago, 20 years ago, does expire in May of next year, so we'd like to begin the negotiations here in the next month or two, depending on your direction from staff, we have some time, but wanted to meet with you far out in advance of that timeline. Our franchise agreements, we have seven dual franchises, which is what we have here in Commerce City, same thing in Thornton, Brumfield, a small, small portion of Westminster, Erie, and a couple of other cities where we serve just a portion of the city, and then nine full franchises where we serve the entire city like Brighton and Fort Luton, Hudson, Keeneburg, Decono, Meany, and some of the other communities in Wells County. Now, these are interhandouts, so I won't hammer on these too much, but a lot of times it's important for councils to know that we have a five and a 10-year work plan, and we're constantly looking at ways to make our system more robust, more reliable, also have more redundant fees into areas. And you can see in the red areas that we have three facilities within the city limits of Commerce City, and one just outside the city limits in the Paris Center area that help us with reliability of redundant fees, and you can see a list of some things that we've done to help here in the last couple of years. We will have the new transmission line, we'll begin installation, tri-state generation will begin installation next year on that transmission line that will run from Reunion up to the Paris Center area. Boy, you know, streetlights, that's kind of a blessing and a curse, we all love them, but for the utility world, that's the biggest pain in the neck for us, because, you know, you're never happy if they're out, but when they're on, you didn't even think about it. We'd really like to have them all on, you know? But we've repaired and replaced and done service on 487 streetlights within your city so far this year, so we're really doing a pretty heavy duty maintenance plan to keep those lights on. They do us no good when they're standing up there in the dark, and they are just a source of frustration for you as leaders and your police department, and certainly for us as United Power, right, Rich? Yeah. New energy options, boy, these are hot times, talk about energy efficiency and renewables, I just want to let you know that, you know, in the cooperative world, and even in the small utility world, we're very proud of what we've done to offer new programs to mostly educate our customer members about what applications really work for them. So I'll kind of run through a few things that we've done, certainly if you have questions later tonight, or later on, you could call Rich or I, and we can talk about it. But education as a cooperative is one of our seven cooperative principles. It's important that we provide knowledge and smart buying, if you would, for our customer members. We hate to have them stunned by a bad purchase that does not work for them. So we've really ramped up in the last three years, our educational efforts through a more robust newsletter, our website has just recently been reinvigorated just within the last three weeks, and lots of online tools, calculators, items through Touchstone Energy, which is our national brand, that really can help customer members with energy efficiency and making wise energy decisions. We recently held our second off-site Energy Expo over at Erie High School, we kind of had to go to the north and the west for a couple of years to help with that part of our, our membership, but we will be expanding and doing more workshops in our south end, and those will be called Energy Save and Use, which are like mini seminars that are free to our customer members. Some of them will be at our headquarters in Brighton and then some off-site locations. We've done some demonstration projects, including a home energy makeover a few years ago with all electric technology to showcase what can be done with electric technology. Soul Partners, which is one of the things we're most proud of, is the first cooperative community solar garden or solar farm in the country, and it was devised by one of my colleagues, Terry Marissa, our new energy program coordinator, and there's a pamphlet in regard to what that is in your packet, but it is a solar farm located at our headquarters where folks that are interested in leasing a panel can do just that, and they don't have to put it on their house or cut down trees if they're in the way. In exchange for the $1,050 for the panel, they get the equivalent of the power generated by that panel, and they don't have any insurance risk, any deciding issues, any of the hassle of doing the construction. Works really good for renters, for people who have lovely spruce trees that don't want to cut them down, or for people that don't have the proper exposure. One thing we would not want to do is to have somebody put solar in on the home side of their house, because it doesn't work so well. So, we put it out the right way, and it's just an option for people to learn. So it's kind of a demonstration, partially funded by the Governor's Energy Office, partially funded by United Power, and partially funded by the folks that bought the first 48 panels. And we recently installed Module Two, and so we have panels available, see me after a meeting with your checkbook if you're interested. We also partnered on a small winter vine in our mountain district to let people know how it works for seasons, so all of this information is on our website, they can check it out before spending $5,000, $10,000, or $20,000. Take a look at this data and kind of make a wise energy choice and not take quite so much risk. We've done a tremendous amount of employee education. We have 160, 165 employees, and why should only three or four of us know about this stuff? The meter readers need to know, the lighting need to know, people that use the grocery store need to be able to answer some simple questions, but tell me about the rebates on heat pumps? Well, we need at least a call this number, check the website, because the last thing we want to do is to discourage people from looking into, into choices. Our CFL promotion, we're in our last year of that, believe it or not, we have distributed about 100,000 CFLs, and this year we had a sales day at Buffalo Run Golf Course, and they did not let me sell that day, because they figured I'd sneak out and be on the cutting green instead of selling light bulbs. But we did have some folks from the Reunion area come over and buy, buy their three packs of light bulbs. We're phasing it out because the variety packs that we have now are just readily available in places that buy electricity from us, so we really kind of hate to compete against our own businesses. So, that's what we do a lot of times with their new technology, we'll get it started, then we'll get out of it and let the biz go ahead and, and, you know, do their, do their sales. We have a litany of rebates for all kinds of customers, on heat pumps, both air source and geosource, electric water heaters, electric heat applications, Energy Star appliances, which they were added this past year, and we just rolled out a new insulation rebate program for those customer members that are enrolled in our cycle air program. We have time of day rates and encourage off-peak energy use, which works great for industrial, residential, and small commercial. Cycle Air Program is going strong, we hope to add 1,000 more subscribers next year. This is simply a program where you tell us, give us permission to put a control box on your air source heat pump or your central air conditioner. We cycle the condenser off during the high peak times, usually late afternoon, and it goes off and on for 10 to 12 minutes, air continues to move, but most people, especially if they have their house insulated well, hence the insulation program, will not notice a temperature change. They really help us to shave heat, which is an important part of our power cost. That's not only the amount of kilowatt hours, it's wind using. So, getting people trained to use them at the right time really helps us, and we can pass that cost saving on to our customer members. I already got ahead of myself and talked about the co-op with Soul Partners Solar Farm. Again, we're open for business on that and hope to build a third module in probably early 2012. We do have other solar incentives and been pretty busy with those, even with the down economy. We've had about $200,000 in empty systems of total takes since we initiated the program about two and a half years ago, and $65,000 in the solar thermal, which is for hot water heating with solar panels. So, we've done pretty well there considering all that has happened in our residential housing market. And then we did add small wind incentives last year, and we only, only had one added, and the reason why is our wind data shows in our territory, or in other maps that we're here, believe it or not, that it's not the best site for, for wind generation, even for the smaller, so you've got a long, long payback in wind and probably better off with solar here. Then we have just added a new rate that helps us with the larger load net metering possibilities for commercial and industrial applications. One final thing that I wanted to mention to you all before we go to questions, we have a new leader coming our way at United Power, Mr. Broderick, our CEO, who's been in charge of United Power for 13 years, is retiring at the end of the year, and our Board of Directors are in the midst of a national search, and they will be doing, they're trimming down to the interview pool late this week, and we'll be interviewing directly after Thanksgiving, so probably there'll be a new leader selected for our organization very early December, and depending on where the person comes from, probably will be taking over the reins January or February, depending on move and other issues of that nature. So, exciting times for us and for our industry, and again, I can't tell you much, we appreciate you taking a chance with us 27 years ago, and the partnerships we've had with the GID to help get things going in the north part of your city, and all the interactions that we have with the great staff. I can't tell you how much fun we have, we do work hard, but we have a lot of fun, a lot of laughs with these three people and a couple of them over here, so you got a good staff, so my compliments, and thank you for your indulgence and your time. Any, any questions, Mr. Mayor?
Questions from Council?
Yes, quickly, I think I would be interested, and I do have your contact information on the panels that are $1,050. Do you install them, did you say, or?
That, that $1,050 panel is already installed at United Power, it's not going to be at your house. So you, you lease it offsite, so you don't have the hassle of putting it on your house, worrying about hailstorms.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and then you get the credit for what one panel produces, and you're not limited to one panel, you're not limited to people that like more. We've had, so, we've actually had a couple that have bought enough panels to theoretically displace every bit of their average electric usage, and I think they bought 23, 12 panels.
Is that a one-time cost of?
Yes, one-time cost, and the only thing is you don't get to keep the panel until leased, so when it's done, and I can't remember if it's 20 or 25 years, it's returned to us.
Okay.
But their life expectancy is about that long.
And I wanted to say something about Rich. He also served his city very well as a council member, and I enjoy going to different conferences and always you and your wife.
Thanks, Governor, for coming by, I was glad to get the update. One of the programs that I didn't see specifically called out, and I wondered if it was still available, is the Energy Audit Program, that's a feature that I was able to take at the end of the year, and I raised a book on a regular basis about some of the simple things that I hadn't developed, I thought, where I thought I could cover my bases, some feedback about simple, finite installation in my basement, and I'm thinking it's had substantial impact, so.
You know, if this is recorded, I'd like to use this for advertising, thank you very much. That is no mission that I should not have made. I have two gentlemen on my staff, I don't know if they ever say so, or that did your Energy Audit, but those are free to our customer members, and they are not the huge blower door test and real high-tech in, but most of our customers can be assisted by a half hour to an hour visit by one of these audits, because there are a lot of simple things that you should do first before you make the big investments. And we have a DVD that we made that shows you how to do the ductwork installation now, and I wish that it brought those, because it's very well-done, and it tells you how to do that. I did that at my house, too, and it does help. So, thank you for that, yeah, it's free, and we've added a new tool for those two gentlemen, they have an infrared camera now, and so we've just got it, so that'll help with looking for hot and cold spots, and even some minor safety or electrical issues in houses, so tell me you haven't added the tool to go up. Thanks for the support.
Thank you. Mr. Big Broom, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Valery, if you want to introduce Tam, Tam's on forward in a discussion of regulations.
Well, Mr. Mayor, there may be a number of staff input on this one, but I'll, I'll let Mr. Big Broom introduce it.
Good evening Mayor, members of Council. Would I just spend a few minutes this evening discussing with you the city's current medical marijuana regulations and bringing you up to speed with the changes that occurred to state law earlier in the year? Last year, the city, city council amended the land development code to add regulations for medical marijuana-related businesses. Currently, I think we have very, very tough regulations for legal medical marijuana businesses. Businesses are limited to the industrial zoning districts, and has also obtained a conditional use permit, and you can only obtain a conditional use, conditional use permit, that's a number of fairly tough standards. Today, we did not actually see any applications for medical marijuana businesses. Back in June, the city council, Mr. Gaylor's surgeon, did put in place a moratorium on acceptance of applications for medical marijuana-related businesses. And back in the spring, Colorado Legislature did amend the state law relating to the regulation of medical marijuana businesses. The city's moratorium will expire at the end of this year, which is why we're here this evening talking to the city's regulations. We would request that the city council provide us some direction on how you would like to proceed in how to regulate medical marijuana businesses. Hospital 1284, which was amended to the state statute related to medical marijuana businesses, became effective July 1st. It does create a licensing scheme for licensing certain medical marijuana-related businesses, and it creates four different categories, medical marijuana centers, medical marijuana-infused product manufacturers, premise cultivation operations, and primary caregivers. You state law also limits the number of patients and primary caregivers who have a medical care, five or fewer. Cities must participate in this licensing scheme for these medical marijuana businesses unless cities elect to prohibit some of these types of businesses. Of the four types of medical marijuana businesses, cities can opt out of allowing the first three, medical marijuana-related businesses, sorry, medical marijuana centers, medical marijuana-infused products manufacturers, and premise cultivation operations. Cities cannot opt out or prohibit primary caregivers. Given the change to state law, the city council does have some options. The city council can adopt an ordinance or a resolution that does prohibit three of those four types of medical marijuana businesses. Again, this would not prevent patients or primary caregivers from cultivating, or in the case of a primary caregiver, selling medical marijuana in accordance with the state statutes, so given the city could prohibit the first three, cannot prohibit primary caregivers. City council can adopt an ordinance that regulates and licenses those additional three types of medical marijuana businesses. An additional option is the city council kind of like to refer to voters, how, I'm sorry, refer to voters, the option of prohibiting certain types of medical marijuana businesses. Again, the city council does not have the option of opting out of allowing primary caregivers. You may allow to voters to prohibit the first three, but even through a vote of people in the city council, the city cannot prohibit primary caregivers. With regard to primary caregivers, the city is allowed to prohibit. With respect to primary caregivers, regardless of how the city council wishes to proceed with the first three types of medical marijuana. limited to our industrial zoning districts, and must also obtain a conditional use permit from the council. That is a little bit of background on the current situation, a lot of love, here tonight is some feedback from council, and how you wish to proceed with regulating medical marijuana-related businesses.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I myself want to go with the most stringent, aggressive regulations we possibly can, but I would also like to hear from you, Mr. Gaylor, on what you would recommend. And the reason I'm saying this is across the street from my business, about half-block down, the type and character of these individuals going in there to purchase, that they are not people that are stick. They look like gang members, and there's all types of shady-looking characters there that are taking advantage of this law.
Okay, just to give some additional information to what Brian gave, and also to elaborate on some of his points in his presentation. First of all, city council did the prudent thing, we're on the cutting edge as far as other cities are concerned, and we adopted the zoning ordinance that we adopted that required the location of any marijuana operation in industrial areas of the city with the conditional use. So when we did that, that went a long ways toward regulating the activity in Commerce City. And as a practical matter, I talked to Brian just today about this, we've got no applications for marijuana operation in Commerce City. So that was a big step forward. Now, we have to recognize that the state constitution was amended that allowed for primary caregivers of marijuana in any municipality or any jurisdictions, unincorporated counties or in any municipality. So we have to recognize that, but that didn't mean that we couldn't regulate them by our zoning ordinance, and that's exactly what we did. Now, at the time we did that, shortly thereafter, a lot of issues arose as to how far a municipality could go in regulating marijuana in the face of that constitutional amendment. So what we did was we passed a moratorium that let the air clear, so to speak, until we could see what was going to evolve with regulating marijuana over and above what our zoning does. And time has passed, and our marijuana moratorium does expire as Brian indicated, December 31, 2010. Now, that means that we need to take some action by that date. Doesn't mean that our zoning ordinance needs to be changed. We'll keep that, recommend, keep that in place, because that's worked fine, we don't want to change that, because that regulates all types of marijuana operations, including the primary caregivers. Now, in addition to that, though, we have the authority now under that House bill that was passed to take an alternative action that's in addition to the zoning. So I want to reemphasize, the zoning stays in place, we'll probably need to tweak that to redefine what we mean under that zoning ordinance, so that it's clear that zoning ordinance only applies to primary caregivers if you elect to go to the total ban. Now, that's one of the choices, just to reemphasize what Brian has indicated. You can elect to totally ban marijuana operations in the city, which would apply to the marijuana centers, infused production, food, marijuana, or premises cultivation, which is a big one. You can't eliminate or ban primary caregivers, but we'd have that regulated under the zoning ordinance. So what you can do, as Brian indicated, pass an ordinance that gives a ban on most of three areas I just named, or you can refer the issue to voter people to decide if they want that ordinance, that's another choice. Or a third choice is you can allow it with a licensing process, which means then you have to adopt a somewhat elaborate scheme for licensing, somewhat similar to liquor licenses in the city, which would then require an application, a hearing process, just like a liquor license, the application for those three areas of marijuana. Now, if I haven't covered your question, I'm certainly available for any questions.
Several months ago, we had... ... exclusive headcount of marijuana. Did any member come back to the city?
No, when they explored the requirements under our zoning ordinance, they chose not to pursue an application.
Then I would agree with Mr. Teeter that we ought to regularly sell that only to primary caregivers, so that we can have that regulated by someone. Is that what was reported in my suggestion?
Subdirection, that's what I said.
I just like to make a point that the third option of voter people would require a special election, since it has to be implemented before July 1st. I have another question, that under that bill that the state passed, it also has a provision in it that medical marijuana is taxable, correct?
Yes, it would defer to whatever the local government's tax scheme under our tax code has, but with a vote of the people, you could also impose a higher tax or an additional tax. Right now, if you didn't address the tax issue, it would be our standard 3.5% on any sales of marijuana.
Mr. MacLeod, I have a bad question, Mr. Brier. I have a couple of questions on the licensing process that the city state regs call for. Would it be possible to transform our liquor order into a reuse body, or would we have to form a distinct body? Just curious from a cost and support perspective. What are your questions?
All right, I can answer that as well. It would be possible, you would appoint a board, an authority to act as this licensing authority, and you'd appoint the same people, somewhat similar to the way the council acts as a GID board and as the city council.
And then the taxation question that Mr. Moreno raised, obviously, it's the current sales tax rate, right, so 2.2%?
Right, now, to clarify that, it's 3.5%, but to clarify that, if you were to impose a special tax over and above the 3.5%, you would need to have that as a separate valid issue, because it would be a paper, a new tax, even though the state statute allows for it, it doesn't override the requirements of paper, that you have to have a vote of the people to impose these special taxes.
And then the final piece to that question on the licensing process, I believe I've seen information that CHS Denver collects a certain fee for those applications in the city, was that accurate?
There could be, certainly, and would be, a licensing fee that would be allowed if you decide to go the licensing route, pay the administrative cost of administering the process.
All my pro-council opinions taken, can you, Mr. Benson? Yes, you know, it seems to be that the thing behind all of this medical marijuana was that a bit of this is nothing more than just a drug or a prescription drug that people who were ill, take, and the state doesn't tax prescription drugs, but you don't take any misadulterations either.
Right.
But we're saying that it can tax marijuana.
In our tax code, which we recently adopted some revisions, we, in anticipation of not knowing what the council would want to do in this area, we did have a specific, or we do have a specific provision in our tax code which allows the taxation under our sales and use tax code of marijuana. So as a homegrown city, we have that authority, but if you were to go beyond the 3.5%, then you would have to have that as a separate validation.
Mr. Mayor, I think, you know, that's a very good point, and actually, it was the subject matter of a lot of debate, the capital on that very subject, because they were saying exactly that, it's obvious that this isn't a medicine because you can tax it. And so each side was kind of using that specific argument for their argument, and I think in the end, the bill reflects that you can tax it.
Well, they're treating it kind of like a... I mean, you could go to any drugstore and buy a lot of, you need a medicine, it's not prescription, and that's taxable, and you just say, we're treating it like that, and well, it's definitely right, you know, the other side.
Mr. Carson, and then Mr. Moreno.
She has my guess, because Teeter brought up the business that goes across her business and types of people that are coming there. Does it tend to have to have a larger police presence if we pass the legislative, do they seem to have problems about facilities, or is everything, you're right, or they have?
Well, let me say, people aren't happy. No, it has, it draws a, you know, a certain personality, and there are problems that are well documented in the city county member and others, whether they're burglaries, robberies, assaults, or whatever, it will bring, you know, a certain level of crime, a certain level of criminal, I can't tell you today how much that would impact the state, would impact us, just like Luthr does. It's enforcement, we have to take time to visit these places, do inspections, check availability of the license, make sure they're not landing under the state and local ordinances. So there would definitely be a gap.
And I'm assuming that it's probably the number one prescription that's written nowadays. If we tax it differently, what would we be looking at for revenue in the test, in any way of speculating, what would we be asking, are we ready to tax it?
This is the first speculation on my part, because it would be strictly a council decision, but I would, I understand that some discussions from city attorneys in general have spoken in terms of 10%, as opposed to 3.5%, but I can't verify any of those numbers, but that's kind of what I would think we'd be looking at.
Mayor, are you regulating as to where you're allowed to use those taxes?
Yes. I would speculate that the revenue would be significant, and I think it would be significant at 3.5%. So if we went to the ballot to look at a higher percentage tax on there, there would be more. We obviously, through our code, have regulations that limit it to the industrial areas, as well as the conditional use process, and then if you recall, we require cameras at the doors and windows, security almost constructing the building, like a vault or bank vault. So there are some specifics. Now, I think your question on tax revenue from that, are you limited to where you can spend it, I think we probably wouldn't want to do that. I don't know if it requires us, other than as a city revenue, I think it would behoove us to put it back into some specific program, but also remember, what the chief mentioned about the law enforcement, so that there's a quick program over there that you get revenue which you may be spending law enforcement.
And one more question, have we heard from our businesses, their feelings about this? Because I'm assuming they're going to be located around our business park.
If you recall, I haven't specifically recalled the forms that we've had with businesses raising specific concerns, I think certainly the businesses that are vacant, they have larger warehouse capabilities, are more apt to be forward because of the revenue that comes from it, but I haven't seen a vocal outcry against it, but we haven't heard any.
Ricky Morris, for economic development, we have not heard a response from the business community, but I believe that's because we're strictly talking about industrial areas. If this was considered a commercial area, I bet we hear a lot more from our business community. Thank you.
Mr. Moreno, and Mr. Benson, and Mr. Mayor. I'll agree with Councilman Teeter, I don't think that this is implemented in a way that the voters intended, but I also think that's why the state legislature felt necessary to pass legislation. For example, getting a second opinion, if you're under a certain age, I think it's 25 or 21, reducing the amount of medical marijuana prescriptions going to people who have criminal histories. I think that was getting at, you know, what Councilman Teeter saw, I think that's why the legislature felt it necessary to pass this. I personally think that we have a very good ordinance in place that will allow, because whether we agree morally with the premise of this business, it is a business, and I think that it will allow that business to be located here while having minimal impact on it moving.
You know, may I suggest that we send this to Mr. Gaylor and the staff with the recommendation that we tax it to the fullest extent that it can be taxed right now, and then the next time we have a regulatory investigation, it's time to be until, what'll be next year, if we hear from them, whether they'll balance price tax, whether we decide to do it. So we'll process the end of November, and we're going to like to move this one question.
The council has not given a direction yet, but we'll keep that going until next month. And similar comments to those of Mr. Moreno and Mr. Benson, I think clearly we don't want to be encouraged, the proliferation of these businesses, we've seen the impact of administrations involved, we were getting right in our way in the 30 block section where you see a number of these businesses extort each other. We certainly don't want to see them in any way, it's making those zoning ordinance established to help avoid just that. That said, as Mr. Moreno put forward, there is a law on the motion tape that allows these businesses to exist. I think to Mr. Benson's point, we don't want to look at the cost of a special election to change the rules. I think our existing ordinance, with some limited refinement, would be much more well. And that said, I think we should anticipate passing the existing 3.5% as a scheme, looking at introducing an increased tax rate, I think that makes sense. said, as Mr. Mayor and I put forward, there is a law on the most escape that allows these businesses to exist. I think to Mr. Benson's point, we don't want to look at the cost of a special election to change the rules. I think our existing ordinance puts a limited requirement to vote, we won't worry about. And that said, I think we should anticipate passing of existing or existing three and a half percent as a scheme. We'll look at introducing an increased tax rate, we think that makes sense down the road. But I think from a medium business process perspective, if we look at enabling our liquor board to function as a people, should application come through, that we may in that process establish appropriate use structure for review. That is just an impressive use structure that not designed to encourage the industry, but not to discourage the industry either. I mean, in all honesty, if these businesses would choose to locate our industrial areas and meet the prescription guidelines that we put forth in our ordinance, I would love to see that actually become true. I would like to see it supported to your ways. I would like to see it used to help support the cost of policing in the industry and community. And I'd like to see the operation that if you are participating, which have efficiency and funding for that. I think if we can target where those operations were to exist and how those funds were collected, inspected, made progress, we will look at and such that.
Mr. Bullock?
After looking at our zoning ordinance, where exactly could one of these buildings locate? I mean, the stringent scheme of our zoning ordinance is just like this Macadam just said to me. There's practically nowhere in this city there's any building you can establish, you know. So, I mean, if you drew a circle, in any one point, is there any place that we have that they can establish?
We did a study when that zoning ordinance was adopted, and there were and are some areas, industrial areas, and maybe Brian can recall somewhat of a general description where those are, but because I can't. But I know industrial areas exist in the city that would qualify. Brian might name his parents or whatever, something of that.
We were able to produce some maps that identified areas that were zoned industrial to meet the separation requirement from residentially zoned areas. There were only a few, as I recall, and I apologize if I read those maps tonight. There were some limited areas in the Irondale, the northern part of the Irondale industrial area, and also in the Stapleton Park industrial area. When we initially adopted the regulations, we had dozens of inquiries from folks looking for locations that would meet the city standards difficult because we don't always know where some of these other uses are located. For example, we don't have currently mapped in our GIS system where all licenses of childcare facilities are. We don't necessarily know where group homes are for the community. We were able to identify locations that met the zoning requirement, that were zoned industrial, located a sufficient distance away from residential, and then respective applicants were then looking in those neighborhoods to see if they also want the separation requirement for other types of uses. So far, I haven't really received any applications because applicants weren't able to determine if we could meet all the standards. So, we just don't know yet if there are any locations that meet all the standards.
In the Irondale area, I don't think there's any place within a thousand feet that there is a mobile home, because they are spotted throughout the whole Irondale area. So, that would kill ninety, well, ninety-nine percent of Irondale. And in Stapleton, with the business district and the residential homes up there, and group homes, and halfway houses, I don't think there's any place in the state in the area where one could locate that it is within a thousand feet of any of the, anything that's on this list right here. And I mean, I was trying to think and thinking, thinking, I'm thinking the only thing, maybe there under two seventy, there might be a spot, there is a spot there, but that's the only place I could think of.
I think Mr. Bullock raises a good point in the sense that under this ordinance, we would essentially be banning these facilities, particularly because something, you never see anything like Broadway here in our city, because they had to be located within a couple feet of each other. So, I mean, if we ever do get an application, I think it's really good that, like Mr. Bullock said, where they might actually be able to locate.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, committee desk and secretary. We could go through some of the trying to battle with legislation that we have, but the fact of the matter is, yeah, well, the fact of the matter is our ordinance is incredibly changing. And we effectively, as act of prohibited, so put laws and base the taxes to someone finding that, folks or people that are operating an operation. And great, we'll direct that accordingly. And I don't know who wasted other time on this, but here to let a great, very good law here, so.
Teeter, so we just want to go around and do you want to start with that?
Yeah, I agree. The difference changes in the rules.
Okay, so either you impose a ban on those three areas, that that would mean the primary caregivers could still exist, which we can't ban, in those areas that the zoning law would allow. If you don't impose the ban, then we would adopt a licensing ordinance that would allow all those operations, but they would still be limited only with a license after going through the licensing board and complying with the zoning law. So, if you have a licensing scheme, then that would allow, if they found a place where they could locate under our zoning ordinance. If you impose a ban, then the only ones that could exist would be the primary caregivers under our zoning ordinance in that limited location. Those are the choices. And I didn't mention, of course, also referring to the, to a vote of the people if you chose to go that route, which I would, I would not recommend, certainly at this point. Mr. Benson and others, they were raising the issue of cost of a special election, which really doesn't make a lot of sense. I might add, it's not only a matter of finding a location under our zoning ordinance, but also expending some funds to break the premises in the compliance with those requirements of our zoning ordinance that require the video cameras and that require the other security measures that are necessary. I might just pass on to council, because this issue has been discussed at length with the city attorneys in some of the meetings I've been in. And some of the comments that I've heard is that, well, it does generate income, but the cost of patrolling and answering the crimes that take place, because you're not just looking at people that are maybe illegally buying, but you're also looking at a, a location that's going to attract possible burglaries, because it's really a target area for people to try and, try and get to. So, you've got those trade-offs. I'm not speaking one way or the other on this issue, because that's your call. But certainly, there are some pros and cons both ways. And if you're thinking about a citizen that really is in need of the medical marijuana and legitimately has a purpose for it, there are certainly areas in our neighboring cities where they can get it. You don't have to worry about depriving a citizen of that opportunity. Probably not steady.
Why don't I just start with Mr. Bullock, and just go around, so we can get some consensus over the weekend, tell staff pretty much where we're doing.
Primary caregiver, according to our ordinance, and no increased tax, because I don't even want to have an election of people. I feel that we aren't going to have, nobody's going to be able to meet these requirements to do anything in our city. So, primary caregiver, because we can't ban them.
Okay.
But then, first three?
Well, we can ban those, yeah. Just primary caregivers only, when I, if it rates.
Okay.
As is already, allowing primary caregivers taxed at three and a half percent rate and establishing a processing structure for primary caregivers.
Mr. Mayor?
I would agree with that. What was, may I give three possible?
Mr. Rubio?
I'm undecided on the first three, but I will fill it, but council, it sounds like you're going to go with it.
Mr. Benson?
I would agree that we ban the first three. And have a primary caregiver subject to our existing waters. And I guess if we want to raise the taxes, and we can, we can do that at any time, that may be better now. The first election, I mean, we have to count on our processes, they have to wait, or whatever, next year anyways. So, I'd say just bad portion with the end, and allow primary caregivers subject to our waters.
Mr. Carson?
Along with Mr. Rubio, I am a little undecided. I will agree to do whatever council likes to do. I do believe this is an issue that's not going away. It's a future discussion forever and ever, like alcohol. So, I, I think that we all need to be thinking, how we win and where we want it, when it does happen, instead of putting your hand up and just saying, no, no, no. I don't mind, we'll do things for now, but it is coming.
Teeter?
Yes, and I am for banning the first three and allowing the caregiver. And also, like you said, Chief, is extremely important to me. And also, Mr. Gayler, right now, if somebody is in need of that, and they do have a medical condition, there are thousands of places where they can undergo.
I'd agree with the rest of the council, so I would add, congratulations there. And any challenges, we'll say that, correct? Okay, thank you.
That was a lot of my point.
Next one, will you go on to?
Yeah.
And Mr. Burrow isn't going anywhere, he's just changing his mind.
He's so lucky. You know, we were talking, kind of just among ourselves before, just talking about, how do you set up a city where you have rules? Perhaps we everything should be, it's the opposite. The next item on our agenda is murals in residential areas. And by re, I imagine, again, and this actually is a result of an incident that has occurred in a residential area where search and neighbors are, I'd say, extremely concerned.
Absolutely correct. What I would like to do to see me is, I would view with your current regulations in the Land Development Code, for murals, give you some background of the particular case that has some residents concerned, which I fully appreciate and understand. Minister Gayler is going to help me explain to you that there are some limits to your authority on how you can regulate the murals, but there are some very limited options. As mentioned, there is some concern about the murals in residential areas. There's one particular case, where the city did recently issue a permit for a mural in a residential area. And again, I'm going to review our current regulations and background of that recent case, and then we'll turn the microphone over to Mr. Gayler to talk about limits to the cities of Florida. Currently, murals are regulated in Section 21-8620 of the city's Land Development Code. And this is the only regulation we have related to murals. Murals that do not convey a commercial message and do not occupy more than ten percent of any wall, roof, or accessory structure shall be exempt from the standards contained in the sign code. Any mural that conveys a commercial message or occupies more than ten percent of any wall, roof, or accessory structure shall be allowed only on the issuance of a permit. This other standard really relates more to murals in non-residential areas. There are a number of staff people, Karen Stevens, Bob Gayler, a number of folks involved in directing the Land Development Code. But there was no specific discussion, no specific intent with respect to regulating or not regulating murals in residential areas. It simply wasn't part of the discussion at the time. There was no specific intent behind this regulation. What was, the only intent at the time was to address murals as a regular commercial signage. Communities that dealt with murals have really dealt with them with respect to non-residential areas and how they relate to a city's signage. We were not able to find other communities that specifically regulated murals in residential areas. That brings us to the specific case that 5350 East 66 Way. The city did receive complaints about the resident of this address was painting a mural on their house. Our neighborhood services division that responded issued a notice of violation requiring the homeowner to obtain a permit for the mural. That notice of violation was issued September 2nd. Same day, the property owner, Casey Hayes, did come into the city and apply for a permit for his mural. As you can see in those regulations, we had very little to go on as city staff. Our position, my position, was because there was no basis of harm, we should deny the permit position. Because Mr. Hayes applied for a permit and a permit position, we were to close the case September 14th. There's a couple pictures of the mural. In their column, regulations indicated that less than ten percent of the size of that basic building, a permit would not be necessary. Because it exceeded that threshold, we didn't require Mr. Hayes to apply for a permit. Now, I'll turn the microphone over to Mr. Gayler. Should you wish to explore possible limits to mural in those areas, it would be important to understand from Mr. Gayler what, what are these for.
Okay, here's the thing. Generally speaking, when we talk about signage, you're talking about a commercial endeavor. And for that reason, the Land Development Code, in our city as well as in other cities, addresses what is legal in a commercial area or a commercial environment. First of all, the main reason for that is, is that it's a different standard when you go to regulate signs that are advertising a commercial endeavor. As opposed to you as an individual in a residential area, just wanting to print something and put it out there. Because there is such things in the First Amendment, that governments are right, but freedom must be. So, when the Land Development Code was, was written and adopted, we were mainly concerned, really strictly concerned with commercial endeavors. Because that's what you would certainly expect a sign would be doing is advertising some kind of activity that would be generating some type of income and a commercial enterprise. So, that's why the Land Development Code really never even addressed a sign in a residential area. Now, having said that, when you start attempting to address a sign in a residential area that's not for a commercial purpose, you run into some constitutional issues. Because first of all, in the words of the courts, you have to have, as a city, a compelling state interest, or compelling city interest, if you will, to justify your reason for trying to regulate someone's right to speak or print what they want to. They want to paint their house blue, or pink, or polka dot, they have a right to do that, even though it may be pretty offensive to some neighbors. Now, what we're talking about here is a case that was decided not that long ago in Inglewood, South Broadway, where there was a mural South Broadway, where there was a mural painted on the side of a building, and the court said that Inglewood did not show a compelling state interest, why they should be able to regulate this property owner's desire to put this mirror on the side of his building. And the result was, the city lost the case. We are confronted with some similar issues here. Now, I'm not saying this evening that there aren't any answers. And so, if we decide that we want to look into this further and attempt to come up with some regulation, which right now, I don't know what it would be. But if you wanted to come up with some regulation, then I would say refer back to my office, and we can dig deeper and see what we can come up with. But I can tell you going in, it's not going to be a very likely situation that we're going to be able to write an ordinance that you can enforce as a city that says what a person can do in a non-commercial setting with what they print or paint from an artistic point of view, or what kind of a painting they can put out there. Because we're also, if we talk about murals, you're also talking about a painting artwork, putting it on the side of the building, either as a separate painting or as part of the building. But I'm certainly open to any questions, but I can tell you going in that it's going to be a difficult task to try and overcome the First Amendment provisions, dealing with the requirement of a compelling state interest. Because remember, beauty is in the eyes of the beholder. And what one person likes, you go to a museum, you see artwork, another person would despise it, and it's the same kind of argument.
Discussion for council.
The housing is crazy, if you can take your public property and anything else. As you well said, beauty is in the eyes of the beholder. It's no different if I wanted to, I could have found, I don't know, with the dolphin stink water, I don't know if it'd be my case or somebody else's. But, and if we were painting, if this was a holiday thing, I assume that all states probably wouldn't have a problem with it. If she painted a Christmas painting in Thanksgiving, but I identify her as a visitor, but we've been coming in front of this stuff. No, I think we should just let it be. And can you tell me, was he just trying to protect himself by telling him he gave a permit, and he did not make it, was that correct?
Yes, it did. Yes, it was over 10%.
Okay, so just because it's over 10%, anybody who chooses to do this, and so...
He was just trying to obey.
And do we ask what they're putting on there, then?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Okay. You're both.
I totally agree with Ms. Carson. Even though I know that people object to different heights, the same argument came up in love, man, in an argument. And up until the one lady came in and just tore it apart, it was one of these things is protected. It's freedom of expression, it's freedom of speech. And it's just like Ms. Carson said, if he had have painted an American flag on the side of this house, we would have never heard about this. I don't even think there would have been a complaint. But now, if he painted something, and this is this Casey Hayes passion, this Casey Hayes worked on the railroad for many years, and he has a collection of old cars, so he painted his passion. And when they told him he needed a permit, he gave the guy a permit because this Casey Hayes should be an American citizen, too. He knows the rules, and he followed them to the letter of the law, and there is nothing we can really do about this, and the more we bring it up, the more we're going to start something, and we really don't want to go down that road. I don't think, why your opinion?
Mr. Mariner.
I agree with Mr. Bullock and Ms. Carson. I mean, I think we're getting it to the realm of civil liberties here, and I don't want to see this city council infringing on anyone's freedom of expression or any of that. That said, I do think that it's a slippery slope, as I talked about with people earlier. And does staff, in the permitting process, have the discretion to reject a permit to someone that, say, wanted to put profanity or nudity on the site of their home? Is there that stipulation in the permitting process?
It's my understanding, and I'll ultimately refer to Mr. Gaylord, that we do not have the ability to regulate the content.
Yeah, I, if I may, Mr. Mayor. There are certain limitations. You can't go into a theater and holler fire. That would be a violation of the First Amendment right, because some other people besides the one speaking that did. Now, having said that, when you talk about profanity in the way of sign, my inclination is, is that you, that there are some limitations certainly. And if, like graffiti, for example, there's the problem that we usually don't have with graffiti, is usually graffiti is painted on somebody else's property. If it's on your own, and you're putting a graffiti on your own side of your garage, I would have questions about whether or not we could remove the graffiti, even in that scenario. Now, profanity, I think draws us the line, and I don't have any authority, case authority to decide to you, but there's probably some out there. But I certainly wouldn't sit here this evening and say that somebody could paint any kinds of profanity even on their own building that would constitute true profanity business. I'm sure I could find something that would allow us to prohibit that. To answer Councilwoman Carson's question, Mr. Hayes applied for a permit. If he would have said, no, I'm not going to apply for a permit, I don't think there's too much we could have done about it. But I think because he didn't want to just fly in the face of the city ordinance, that, and I don't know when that was originally written, but it might even have been on the books when he was mayor, I think that's the attitude he had, so he was just trying to comply with whatever ordinance said. I want to clear up one other thing. Everything we're talking about tonight, about the limitations, compelling state interest requirement, all that, that deals with government. If you have, if you're in a subdivision and you have covenants, private covenants, see, they don't have the same restrictions as we as a government would have. So, in a private subdivision covenant that we were talking about, if we happen to be the homeowner association sitting here tonight talking the same, there's a lot that we could do if it's violating our covenants. But we're not talking about private business or private subdivisions or homeowner association. We're talking about government here, and that's why constitutional provisions come into play.
Covenants. You know, just my private, this is where people move their day choice. And I've seen this, this on Mr. Hayes', and it's beautiful, you've done an absolute beautiful job. My fear is the next one, or the next one, or the next one. And I understand rights, and I understand all this, and maybe this is why certain areas of certain cities become aggressive. Hopefully, someone comes through next time with another one of these murals, and it goes in for it, people look as good as this. Hopefully, it is not going to be something that someone doesn't feel is appropriate, and they feel is appropriate. The last one, which is important. There's no way that we're going to be able to fix this, it's just, I hate what it could become. Anyway, I think at this point, we're probably done with it. I haven't seen legally that there's anything at all we're going to be able to do. And again, as far as Mr. Hayes' concerns, this is a beautiful piece of art. I'm just always worried about the unintended consequences, and that's what concerns me. There's nothing further on this. I'm going to step out of the way, and Mr. Peter, and she will take that.
Okay, next, I will now ask City Manager Jerry Flannery to advise staff to come forward to open the discussion on 120th Avenue study items.
Thank you, Members of Council. Mr. Greg Clennett, if you'll present this item.
Before Greg starts, I'd just like to make sure, for the sake of the record and amendments, that there's no objection from the City Council to Councilwoman Teeter acting as mayor for the next items on the agenda until the mayor returns.
Okay. Okay. Greg, you ready?
Thanks, Gary. 120th, the important arterial on the northern boundary of the city. It will be critical for the city's future economic development. From our transportation plan, the council adopted recently, in 2010, the current average daily traffic on portions of 120, at US 85, is about 10,900 vehicles per day. That's a lot for two lanes of traffic. In 2035, however, that is projected to be at the same plan of 38,000, which is more than triple. Obviously, things will have to change on that road to handle that. In comparison, 104 currently carries 13,300 approximately in the same location, and is projected to go in at 27,000, which is considerably less than 38,000. 120 is classified as a principal arterial, despite four lanes by probably 235, and six lanes over. 120, like it says, is at near the northern boundary, it has a regional significance. Regional planning cooperation has occurred in the past and will be considered to continue in the future. This presentation is a brief timeline summary or overview of the history of the date. It might provide some basis for future decision making. It's intended as a special item and no specific law in question with City Council. This is the right-of-way jurisdiction map. 120th is the red line, parallel line on the top of the map. The brown shading is property annexed, granted to City Brighton, the blue obviously is Conner City. The western limit for that is approximately, the flat river is here, and eastern, this is I76. Girl, that's not forced, I'm sorry. This is 176. Starting the little history, the 1989 IGA, between the City of Conner City and the City of Brighton, they were anticipating the time the new airport development starting up. And this agreement set the annexation boundary. It provided a revenue sharing limit in 191, and it provided for joint planning. The agreement was 30 years unless renewed, which socially expired February 29th. In 1998, the city participated in 120th Avenue environmental impact statement process. This was from US 85 to the Tullman Street, which is the study area, which included the intersection of US 85. It involved all the neighboring jurisdictions in Addis County communities to the left, as well as CDOT from the Federal Highway Administration. The main purpose was to evaluate optional alignments. And in this study, selected an alignment as well as indicated that it required an interchange at the intersection of US 85. And also, separate limits of where that right-of-way should be put in. Within the time period, 1998 to 2001, the city organized a general improvement district, was created and organized at the time for the construction of water and sanitary sewer infrastructure. Also, what it provided was, the city had to annex the public right-of-way so that these water and sewer lines could be constructed in that boundary. So, the city became the owners and rights avoided, really weren't abiding, city properties, with ownership becoming responsible. In 2005, the City of Conner City did a widening resurfacing project from municipal van lines to eastern Tullman. With the airport, well, with the next item, I'm trying to, there was discussion of the price of the river, and we know that 120 was in terrible shape. So, this was this whole City of Conner City project, $2.5 million. And at the same time, the school district, 27J, we built, and Craig, we built the middle school and high school. They included their frontage improvements for better side of Y, that cost $108,000 In 2005, the stillwater subdivision had been platted, but it was discovered, and they were starting to develop, it was discovered that there was some lots for the future interchange area of the US 85 project. So, the Conner City purchased the land, preserved it for the interchange, which avoided later acquisition and relocation issues, housing the past 250,000 or four lots. In 2006, and this is why the city anticipated the resurfacing project, the connection between Quebec and US 85 is completed, including the bridge to South Flat River. This was a major connection. The cost sharing request was initiated by this county starting in 1999. It included Addis County, Conner City, Brighton, Northland, and Westminster. The total cost of the project was $37.3 million. The federal share was about half, 19.3. Conner City's commitment, which was confirmed by the City Council Resolution in July of 2006, was $799,908. This is the item that was explained in the Hush Retreat, that what we paid... This is the item that was explained in the Hush Retreat, that what we paid half in 2011 and half in 2012. In 2007, the design and construction of Peoria's traffic signal with 120 was completed at the cost of $83,350. The City of Brighton contributed $25,000 to that project. Commerce City maintained and operated the city. In 2009, the design and installation of flashing speed metal signs in the area of the two schools was completed. School District 27J paid $22,476 for equipment and installation. Commerce City is responsible for operation. A note to that agreement, the agreement also provides the City of Brighton will enforce traffic laws in 120 between Peoria and Toleman. And just recently, Brighton's Adams Crossing Water and Sewer Infrastructure Project is completed. This is based on a license agreement to provide for the use of right-of-way and the set responsibility for this project. Commissioned in July of 2009, and construction was recently completed with the acceptance and moderation July of November 1st. And you'll remember this agreement, it's very recent. We sure that agreement between Commerce City, Adams County, South Avenue Water Sanitation District, and the property owner. The purpose is to preserve right-of-way again for the interchanges that was studied almost 12, 13 years ago. And the land was swapped. This area, that property was in the future right-of-way, and the property is moved here, the structure is under destruction.
As City of Commerce City.
The new site will be annexed to the city as part of the original. Next steps, the transportation plan obviously includes the interchange at US-85 and on the Pacific Railroad to accommodate six lanes. The interchange is estimated at $50 million. There have been some discussions at the state level at least about beginning that process towards funding that interchange. But in the future, there will need to be increased coordination, common understanding standards for that roadway in the future.
Are there any questions?
Ms. Carson? Greg, can you explain to me, is this recent as last week? 120th seems to be a very confusing name, all day and the list of things. I have gotten phone calls in the past, but last week I got a phone call that the chief decided to do some work with that and sent the men up, I guess, to patrol traffic. And he just now said the City of Brighton is responsible for all traffic control, but we were up there with radar cameras?
Yes. 120th is our jurisdiction. We, because it lays like, has water lines underneath the avenue there, we take, we took jurisdiction, that is our property, we're the only ones, what we share, we, having fully backed up, we have an agreement with Brighton to do shared enforcement there in front of the high school.
No, I didn't give that correct information.
Yeah, but it is, but it is ours for enforcement purposes.
Okay, so we do all traffic control, 120th, or?
Not all.
We do share?
We do share it, but I don't think we have jurisdiction for the entire life of 120th. That agreement was for the school, right, there between Peoria and Toleman.
Is, so that area would be Brighton to patrol, and then stay outside that? Okay, Chris, we may have to write this down.
It's kind of, it's just like the problem we had in 96 and Highway 2. 96 Avenue was ours, but north and south of 96 and Highway 2 is not in the city, and we don't have enforcement jurisdiction. That's why we have to turn that project over to Commerce City to control. It only gets worse.
And the traffic is just going to increase at Adams Crossing, okay? Are we ready for that? You can say no like that.
We understand that the traffic's going to increase, that's why I'm alerting you to the 38,000 vehicles. At this point, we're going to have to talk about long-range management plan and how this all happens. It will require cooperation of all those entities, as can we see that Commerce City, Brighton, Hope Face, and assistance from the Western Communities to get that process pushed forward.
And I know we're talking 120th, but you mentioned 104, so I'm going to mention 104. That light there, so if you're coming westbound, or eastbound on 104, wanting to make the left under the highway, which are undue 85s. Your lucky is two cars can get to that green arrow, and it's backing traffic up beyond the light of Hill Creek. Whose light is that? Is that ours?
Yes.
Can we do something about that?
Well, the signal of US-85 is state-controlled. We can talk to them about the timing. The one at Bell Creek is the city's essentially, and they're tied together, somewhat complex, in a somewhat complex manner, so timing is difficult to change much.
Well, I know a lot of people wanting to turn left are now driving through Bell Creek because of the fact that you cannot get through that light on the left-hand turn. Jason's shaking, and he's trying to make someone up there also. So we're sending a lot of traffic through Bell Creek, and I believe if we just give an adjustment on that light, it'll put it back on.
I also, Greg, I think the timing of the 104 project should have an effect on that eventually as well, right? That's the, that's going to be built, I mean, obviously, the short-term solution, but then there's a longer term of the actual cross-section being widened, so you'll actually have a lane that allows more stacking to build that, right?
Yes, or be double west, but we'll mediate some of that stuff at least in year of construction. So we'll check into the fact. That is a good point.
Mr. Menison?
Is anything that the study did with regard to the commercial development law in 120th Avenue? Is that Adams Crossing is going to be opening, but then the idea is, I mean, a lot of people over there needing places to eat and shop. Anything about commercial development law in 120th Avenue? I know that's not your...
I'm sure. Your hearing would be much better.
Sorry, do you have any more questions?
Well, commercial development law in 120th Avenue, we're going to have Adams Crossing opening next year. I think there'll be 600, 700 people working here, who are going to need places to eat, places to shop. Do we have any plans for the commercial development law in 120th Avenue? I know Brighton, I'm sure that's, you know, a lot of plans.
Quick update on Adams Crossing. Actually, we haven't received any plans today for when that piece of development will open up, the Adams County Administration Building will be open as of January, which actually will bode well not only for 120th Avenue, but 104th Avenue as well. We have an additional 1,000 employees coming in, which is something we've been talking about to all of the retailers in our outreach. The addition of 1,000 employees will definitely help our cause, not only on 104th, but 120th as well.
We're working on it.
We are working on it.
And I would add that we've met with all of the major property owners on 120th Avenue and south of it, to have conversations about the zoning that they have, and also sharing some of that experience.
Okay, good.
Mr. Bullock, or who is first?
It doesn't matter.
Okay. Chase, if you want to go first?
Earlier in your presentation, you referenced the foundation of the energy of Brighton before I recall. You've obviously talked about the releasing of that corridor, but there was few things that I found interesting in your bullets, both with revenue sharing and with joint planning. We've had some challenges over the last couple of years relative to joint planning and confusion in that area. From a revenue sharing perspective, do you want to understand what that speaks to? Because ultimately, my question is going to end with, when we look at 120th Avenue and the anticipated road through the Adams Crossing project, is there a provision for cost sharing that wants to get you back toward or give them that, Brighton, if you think that issue area of that, that has to be there for the animals?
Speaking of, the agreement, which is in effect, the general forage is to be shared in the 300 foot, either side of the road, be limited to the area. Formers starts at 100,000 per year, which has not been reached, or has not been obviously made for the pressure, so that it's not occurred at this point. The joint plan, Brighton was included in the company planning process. They have another one that's a lot, maybe to provide for the, you know, if there's more big questions.
Well, the joint plan is a question, and there obviously have been concerns that we've, we're kind of lumping into each other relative to improvements in that quarter, unless you're right, it's had no recent work in that quarter relative to there we have, that there were wireovers. And we've got suggestions from our peers on the other council that Commerce City is getting away, I guess my concern is, if we have a joint planning agreement in place, is that being executed in the future, does it affect the community, given the character of that corridor?
Let me give you a little perspective on that project. It was a period of coverage, and there wasn't a joint planning in place for this project. The city, Commerce City, put a licensing agreement, so all the divisions were filed up front. The license agreement was adopted almost at the same time as the project. Some of the issues in the work contained related to compliance standards and specifications on asphalt, for example. Construction issues, fading curb gutter and sidewalk, the way it was placed during age, dimensions, asphalt depth, elevations that caved, and so that, that's an asphalt understone. So, and then traffic, we have a lot of issues with contract on track control, some in church and road, and a lot of roads at the city. We're very hesitant to address those requests and all that. The KESCO is a very good project. It was underdesigned, very importantly, in US-85, in that, in that contract.
Do we foresee any increased costs or challenge for the city, or city as a result of those shortcomings on that project?
Not in the short term, because we've addressed a daily rotation of the grid at the time. And we discussed with the other staff, I think, that this will be recorded in the future, you know, for, for the, for the asphalt.
So just to kind of go back to my last important question, when we talk about building the zone out of 120th Avenue, again, including a substantial chunk of that corridor, it's in Brighton, and so what if anything exists between our two cities that will, for them to participate in the cost? What would be that corridor?
Nothing specific at this time. I think one of the things we need to do is have a common standard for 123, the area, at least in, as I said, so the width of roadway, the stand for sidewalks, all of that, please. I'm really confused by the, the future situation.
So my guess is if those were probably discussions, then we could, we could, so we'll see them later.
We should.
If we do so, is there any merit in discussing participation in the build out of that corridor?
No time like the present start, I suppose.
I mean, it's better than showing up, you know, glad we're everywhere, but following around, saying, you might have to participate. I mean, I guess, my thought is this, I would hate to see Commerce City taxpayer pay for that inner of the road when you've got Brighton taxpayers that are literally on the side of that corridor, in fact, that they're made on it, so. What works, you think, makes sense to start the, sort of, the discussion? So I guess to us as council, in our interactions, on the discussion we should approach, unless I'm allowed in that, I thought that's not too expensive, the chunk of road that's built for our neighbors.
How, the interchange will be part of that?
We should, yeah, you could refer to that, but that's, that's a little, that comparison that the rest of that corridor.
Good point.
Mr. Bullock? Yes, of the long-range planning, going back a little bit, talking about the revenue sharing on 300, either side of the road. How far west does that agreement take us? I mean, on 120th Avenue, is it west of 85? That agreement is in force, or is it just east of 85?
And after the review of the agreement, the action, or the, the, the plan, it says hard to rule it out.
Because in the long-range planning, it's just going back to what Mr. McAdamy just said, that the intersection and the building out of 120th and Highway 5 is just a small part of it, but the traffic that's going to be carrying on St. Paul and Highway 2 and 120th, east of Highway 2, going at Adams Crossing, is going to directly affect Commerce City, and we're going to have a direct impact on it, but we, it doesn't seem like we're going to be compensated for it in the short term, and I'm hoping that we have discussions that we get compensation in the long term. Is this something that has already been agreed upon, or is it something that, as Mr. McAdamy was saying, we need to start a discussion right now, to make sure that that is accomplished?
I think we need to start, I don't know if it's not started, it's in progress, at least that we can step up.
I agree with you, Mr. Bullock, and Mrs. Carson, and Mr. McAdamy. I want to tie down Mr. McAdamy's asking Brighton to participate in the caution.
Um, I want to tie down, Mr. McAdams, asking Brighton to participate in cost sharing. Jason, I think what you're saying is correct. Um, I will say it was, not to bring up such a subject, but I believe in cost sharing. Um, I brought to the council the cost sharing of, um, the resource officers in those schools. I believe that would have been a gesture that would went a long way to saying this city does believe in cost sharing. And that we will set a play where we, um, in turn, um, if you're going to want other cities to do that, you, you know, um, you have to go out there and actually participate in the idea of doing what you're asking somebody else to do. Um, I do believe this is very important to the residents up there. I don't care which side of 120th you live on. Uh, residents don't care about you, if council has two, if one council member, to another, they don't want to someplace where they benefit from everything. I do believe this is something you need to, um, I do say that we as well as what we're asking the Brighton council members to do, is open your mind, um, ask for this cost sharing wherever we can, um, don't so quickly close the doors and, and say to one another, well, that's, that's the responsibility to take care of it. Um, I don't believe that residents benefit any time you have a close one like that. So yes, um, I, I think we should do, work on building a good partnership. Um, and the next question that I have, is something that's been brought up to me, um, three or four times since I was elected to council by various different groups. You're talking about asphalt standards. I have been told that anybody who lays asphalt in our city other than us, we have a higher standard of asphalt we have to lay. Is that correct? No, is it, if, if we as the city are putting down asphalt in our city, do we put down a different grade of asphalt as to the water department for our roadway and the plane, please take this back now? Do they have to put down a higher grade of asphalt?
If they have, if the road was built with that grade of asphalt, that's what they're going to use according to our standards.
I'm not sure that I understand that. So are we requiring people to put down a higher grade of asphalt than what we did to the city?
No, no, that's not the case. Um, if the road was built with that particular grade of asphalt, and they come in and cut it, South Avenue, it's been a water line or something, they're required to replace that asphalt with the same grade of asphalt, so the same as our standard.
Okay, thank you.
And that was similar on the 120th corridor.
Mr. Benson?
The border with Brighton is the center line, is that right? 120?
Yeah. We own the 60 feet of Brighton. The city owns that red line, which is 60 feet of Brighton.
So we own the whole road. The whole road is in Commerce City?
Yes. Usually there's a little bit of room on the side of the road for benches and, uh, a good, uh, guy that works right away is where the holes are.
But we are responsible for maintaining the hole, right?
That's correct.
Even though the hole more of a side is Brighton.
That's correct. Although we have a maintenance agreement with Adams County, uh, which was 120th there continuing and any, it's not a moving asset.
Remember, we had been approached by a Brighton city councilperson, um, about, um, telling them they thought that we should provide SRO to recognize football, and they should pay half of their costs. And I said, well, maybe we'll think about that, if you want to start paying half of the cost of maintaining 120. I haven't heard anything back from them on that issue. I think I have a few notes that I can read, yeah.
I thought it was a good response.
That was true. Mr. McAdams?
Uh, just, again, the, the IGA looks like no to the revenue sharing. It's from flat to flat all the east to begin the road, and then it picks up on a variation, maybe like how to, uh, what is still happening, once we're short, even the corridor, and obviously, someone actively on that corridor. It seems to me, maybe this is a question that we should get over. These sound like, you mean amendments, or amendments to the IGA, is that correct? Any formalization about revenue sharing, the CDMI that, or any discussions relative to, uh, formalizing the cost sharing of the build out, if those can be analyzed as an amendment to the IGA?
If, if we change the formula, we have to change.
If we sit there and write tomorrow, and we agree to some formula for the cost sharing on, on the build out. Would that be analyzed, then, into the IGA, or would that be a dependent?
Would, under your scenario, is it not already covered by the agreement?
I don't see anything, given my quick scan, that speaks to who pays. And revenue sharing seems to suggest that there is some form of revenue sharing.
Are you looking on page four, or in paragraph three of the agreement?
Uh, I see four, there are three. Which speaks to the rise, it speaks to revenue sharing, but it doesn't speak to how those funds are distributed. Of course, I guess.
When you read on, there's a formula that divides the revenue.
Which is great. What about the other side on spending dollars, common rule? Oh, is there anything, I don't see any in the IGA.
No, no, that just says it has to be followed by.
At least five miles, you pay 20%, we pay 80%. It seems like that's a missing element here, especially with the road.
To answer your question, I think it's going to be an amendment, that will have to be worked out. And as a matter of fact, um, before, um, city manager, John Randall left, we were actually having those conversations. It hasn't come up since. I think it's mostly because there hasn't been activity, but, um, I think with that crossing, I see potentially industrial use of some kind, so how that plays into the revenue share and just retail. Those are some of the issues we have to work on.
You're talking about how the money should be spent?
Two things. Yeah, I'm curious about how the money can be spent. But as a lesson, as, as my concern is more, I don't see language in here that speaks to how we fund the expansion of 120th.
Okay, yeah.
So it seems like if, just the discussion, the ultimate discussion, the intersection at 600, 800, 850 is potentially to pick that up again, that we need to comprehensive that any discussion, or with our partners on that quarter. So interchange and the span of 120th between the flat and roughly how it would effectively, as we would best, we need to be able to fund each other all along that quarter.
You're right, the, the agreement only talks about revenue, it doesn't talk about how it should be spent.
Mr. Flattery, would you be able to have a discussion on this further, and maybe a presentation on this concern at all? I think that's important.
I think, you know, one of the things that I'd like to maybe over, overarching discussions, there, there have been, uh, coordinated discussions, even though it seems like there's a disconnect. I think some of the, some of the, the issues are in the details. Um, for example, um, Greg mentioned the hurry up type project on 120th. If we would have put the lights in, uh, the crossing lights in when they were being forcefully demanded by certain people, um, and that would have been a $22,000 loss for the school, because what would have happened is we would have put them in, then the water lines would have come and they would have been ripped up, and then there would have been schools costing to replace them. So we actually were trying to coordinate on our side to make sure that it was properly timed. And so then, when it got down to begin, there was a discrepancy, I think, in some of the payment standards. We have different standards, even though, um, even though they, they're considered higher, I think, uh, different cities have probably slightly different standards. And I don't know what price is, but the contractor who was working for Brighton, trying to build to their standard, probably not fully understanding that it was in the jurisdiction of the city of Commerce City. So there was a, there was a conflict in that discussion where, uh, they had to be given these standards, even though they were given them very, very far advanced, it still was dependent on the last minute. And so, um, um, I think that was a lot of the concern that parents were having. Uh, I certainly was concerned, and know that we had achieved that, his staff go out and do, uh, traffic control in front of junior high, I think, for a while, and now it's being built, uh, and the meetings were being built. So there's been a coordinated effort, so I don't want to, don't want to leave anybody with the fact that we're not working together, because I think we are, I think sometimes it gets to a higher level than it should to have that coordination. But I think it's just a matter of having those conversations more and more, and I think we're, we're doing it. This agreement, I think, expires in early, I think. Um, so there, there's certainly a little time to look at it, but I think if we start seeing development, and we know it's coming, then we need to get on top of that, uh, now, uh, before, before we see a bunch of building work finishing in, and we're trying to figure it out.
Any other questions from council? If none, thank you, Mr. Clemens. Um, I will now ask city manager Jerry Flattery to invite staff to come forward to open the discussion of the northeast Greenway corridor.
Thank you. Tom Ayers is going to be presenting this.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. What I'm bringing for you tonight is kind of a follow-up to some previous discussions that we've had in front of city council. Commerce City has been involved for, I want to say, past five or six years with what we call the northeast Greenway corridor. As a result of the settlement, uh, last year between Shell and the Army, there is a fund that Commerce City is working with the other jurisdictions to develop a list of key projects upon which to, uh, utilize some of those funds. Uh, Shell and the Army have given or are depositing roughly about $10 million into a, um, account of which those proj, that money is to be used for projects which are within the northeast Greenway corridor. There's an additional $17 million that is going to the state, which is also to be used as part of the natural resource damage assessment, um, restoration or replacement of, uh, habitat and resources that have been damaged from the refuge. Previously, earlier this year, Commerce City, uh, we did a budget amendment, we included in that reauthorization, funds to be used for matching funds, or grants to do some additional planning and refinement of those projects, so that we've got a coordinated effort with the state trustees for what those projects will look like. As part of that, since we're getting closer to that, and are working and looking at, uh, key floors and planning terms to help us with that, the jurisdictions which are involved in the northeast Greenway corridor, that being Denver, Aurora, Commerce City, Brighton, and Norton, um, desire to enter into a cooperative agreement to really specify how that money will be spent, uh, but each of those jurisdictions are, uh, providing this match. Commerce City's matches are going to be $20,000. Aurora's providing $20,000. Adams County is, uh, providing, I believe, $25,000. $10,000. Uh, Brighton is $5,000, and Portland is $5,000. That's based on our expectations about the size and the kind of projects that may come out of those efforts. Um, so with that, we have drafted this, um, cooperative agreement. Uh, we're actually probably going to do one with our relationship with San Creek and Greenway as well, so we get that funds over here. Um, Sand Creek will be our agent for this project, and we will continue to work cooperatively, like as we have for the past five years, with our other jurisdictions. Um, I just wanted to bring this forward, give you a chance to take a look at it, to ask any questions, and we'll be coming back next week with a resolution to adopt and allow this, uh, cooperative agreement to be signed. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council? Mr. Bullock?
Mr. Atrix, is this the agreement that the, uh, Sand Creek, which the Greenway is going to basically be one of the, um, facilitator over, is the agreement, because at our last meeting Thursday, they brought forth the same agreement that put our dog sitting for approval, so they can actually facilitate it. Is this the agreement that you're, okay?
Yes, that is. And just so to clarify, Sand Creek is going to help facilitate all the jurisdictions working together. We're looking to hire a consultant team to help us all work together to come up with one of the best projects, taking into account the projects that we've already presented, um, and we've got a list of millions of dollars worth of projects. We're trying to hone those down into what needs or criteria for the natural resource damages. And trustees are, which are the state health department, the attorney general's office, and the head of the division of natural resources, um, agree that we are the best group to help, um, spearhead these projects to try to leverage the $27 million, the $200 million, the priority of the projects that can be done.
Thank you. Any other questions?
My one.
Mr. Baylor?
Uh, Tom, so based upon that probation of expenses, I know that we're being, uh, toward those, is that, is that the gate view that we're looking at approximately of four to conclude the funds?
I hope we get more than the four that we've been able to. A lot of that was decided on how much people could contribute, given the budget timing, as everyone's in budget crunch, and also kind of how close they are to the refuge. Uh, again, the $10 million projects are slated to be spent in the natural, we, we want it to be in the corridor, but the $17 million could actually be spent statewide. We're trying to come up with, try to keep it close to the home.
Okay, is, any other questions? Okay, just a second here.
Um, if it's okay with you, council, um, I'd like your excuse for the rest of the evening, and leave Captain Johnson in charge, just to do the final couple of things, is that okay? Um, lying back exactly that a little bit, and, uh, not going to be as cautious in my conversation. Any, any discussion, which council, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now ask city manager Jerry Flattery to invite staff to come forward to open the discussions on the I-7, uh, IES PAC.
Thank you, uh, we don't have to go forward, I think it's, uh, Mr. Atrix wants to get in. How's the news going?
Thank you again, uh, council members. It's been a couple of months since, uh, we last gave an update on I-7, uh, S-PAC. We've had a couple of meetings since that time. Um, we've had, also had a, a couple of meetings with our fellow business and county and citizen representatives, um, to the PAC, and as we try to coordinate our efforts, as we're, uh, having discussions with the PAC, to make sure that we're all on a common understanding of some of the issues and concerns that are being brought up. At the September 14th meeting, uh, there's, there's basically a brainstorming session on each of the alternatives, how they could be approved, because that's one of the tasks put forward to the PAC, is maybe kept trying to the best that they could be. Um, they separated out into separate working groups, which were multi-jurisdictional. Um, I unfortunately did not, uh, get a participated in that, but my fellow PAC member, Ms. Nealon, did. And what they, what they, what came out of that process was suggestions and concerns that related to the infrastructure and the physical, um, characteristics of each of the alignments, and how those can be improved or changed to make the, uh, alignments better. An example might be how close our schools, Swansea Elementary School is right up against I-7. So that's one of the constraints that, that folks can take a look at, as they try to look at, should it stay out of line, and if it go off, realign it. At the October fifteenth meeting, uh, we took a bus tour. And that bus tour included some of these key areas where people had concerns or provided suggestions. We stopped at Swansea Elementary School, and we stopped, took a quick ride, a quick stop in the bus at the National Western Stock Show, drove the entire realignment and aligning area as much as you can. We took a look at an area within the border of Commerce City and, uh, Denver along, you know, We took a look at an area within the border of Commerce City and Denver along, you know, Bryant Boulevard and 52nd Street, where some businesses are going to be impacted, which have not been impacted in the past, but it could also be an opportunity for businesses to now have more visibility than they've ever had. We took a look at Rose Hill Elementary School and its relationship to I-70, and where the realignment will be, which is to the south of that by about three quarters or a mile away. Are there impacts that are going to be felt, be impacted there in that area? Took a look at the neighborhoods to the south of 56th Avenue, which was 56th Avenue and I-27, that's been kind of a mix of industrial and residential, like in the conflict called Alphabell, that may continue to grow into industrial areas, if people decide to change their properties or lease their properties. We looked at the alignment and realignment, some of the issues related to Bass Quest Boulevard, the interchange of I-70 and 56th Avenue and Colorado Boulevard, and then the connection and with the alignments to all the fast tracks. The East Line, you know, going through Alphabell and Deborah, how the alignments would be able to be complementary with Bass Quest Boulevard and fast tracks. After the tour, we got back into the Swansea Recreation Center and started going through some of the suggestions that had come out of the September 19 meeting, and it became clear that really it was an effort that really staffed from each of those jurisdictions and CDOT team really took a look at some of those suggestions, really consultants were not clear on what was said, what came out of the September 19 meeting. Those meetings are ongoing. We're going to be meeting, I think, next week with the consultants and CDOT team about some of those concerns that they don't quite fully understand and how they relate to the realignment there. They've been with Denver on the alignment section. Some of their concerns that were brought up were connectivity, they're losing some potential more south connectivity of the realignment, should we look back there? Increased traffic potential on 56th Avenue, which may become a reality if the realignment happens. Some of our concerns still have to do with the interchange of 56th Avenue with Bass Quest and I-70, that be approved. We've been working with them, in fact, with NAC and I, and Shana Hockey Field, unfortunately, Detective who's there with some of the traffic analysis. And a few more questions, whether we're trying to actually, we're also trying to look at it from a broader perspective, extending Alphabell to I-25, I-76, I-27, you know, how those impacts, we think there are going to be impacts there, even though it's outside the study area. They're doing what's called a synchroanalysis, some of the local work. You know, what we're seeing is not a big difference between the no-action alternative, which is today's alignment with Bass 23, and if the realignment should occur, what those impacts are to Commerce City. We're now getting a little bit more comfortable that some of the impacts are going to happen regardless of the realignment happening. In some cases, with existing road networks, the realignment's going to take some traffic off of some of the streets, on Commerce, and 56th Avenue, and the Monmouths. So, I think it's been a very good activity that they've been working from the technical, and I think CDOT has been listening and working with us, and is elaborate on that, which is try to make sure we've got all the information. We do have a meeting on Thursday. At that meeting, we're going to further discuss some of the concerns, and how the consultants and CDOT are going to try to address those. There's going to be a presentation by each of the school districts on how the I-70 project affects the Aurora, Commerce, 14, and Denver School District in combination. We're going to have a discussion on walkability. How does the alignment and the realignment work in walkability? What are some of the criteria that people want to see as far as walkability, especially for students from the school? And then take a look at some of the detailed elements, some of the structures and elevations that we're releasing to help the alignments. And then at the end of the day, try to start having some high-level discussions and invite groups talking about, okay, what are some of the things that we should really evaluate for the full works to do. I think we've had some very good discussions. I think everyone's contributed. Our team members, Chris's standpoint, we're all concerned and expected that with very helpful, Scott actually suggested some of the changes in the tour, like some of the ones, and that was very helpful from a school standpoint, and Jerry Burge's standpoint. We had some discussions with the Moment Careless Association, which is on that PAC too as well. And we've been including the county, we're talking with the county, just to make sure that we're trying to convey their message as well, and that's for certain. So, with that, I will open it up to any questions.
Mr. Moore?
I have a two-part question. One is a timeline question involving finances with CDOT. Is there precedent or income? What is the timeline for doing anything?
You can take a good guess, because we, none of us have got that answer. They had told us that, and that can jump in at any time, they had told us with the impetus or maintenance that they've done with the Bydus, we've had that over 15 years. They're hoping to start getting some money of the Kidney Bank, or Kidney Bank, the Fasters legislation. I know they've mentioned hoping that with the reauthorization, that all of these funds become available, but I don't think they've put a solid timeline on when the funds can be available.
And the second part of my question is, how does this affect Aurora with the alignment of I-70, even going off, staying on the precedent alignment? I understand that Aurora would be affected because of more rain, but basically, why is Aurora such a partner in this, when it really doesn't affect them as much as it affects the cities here? I, I, I guess it's just my personal case, but I'm offended sometimes that Aurora's even in this discussion, because they aren't doing that, I mean, they're going to benefit from that 100%, and they aren't going to be impacted by it all, like Denver, Commerce City, even the states online, which still will be affected more than Aurora will be. Why are there any discussions?
Aurora, I'll do my best to try to answer that. Aurora is in the discussions, because they will have some impact if things aren't found or looked at in certain ways, and I think a lot of it has to do with the time that's taken. The time that has gone from the start of the EIS to where we are today, is some of the changes that are occurring with the Simmons, with the light rail station and things of that nature. That's what they're paying attention to. I think the other thing I heard from Aurora's interest is, when we get to the tolling discussion, they've got some heavy truck traffic, some heavy industrial areas, that they've got a concern when that discussion comes up. We haven't even talked about tolling yet, and what that affects. Right now, we're just looking at the two alignments and taking a discussion of those. And Aurora, like Adams County, has got a decreased number of representation on the table. They've got one citizen and one staff member, whereas Commerce City and Denver have got a couple of staff members, a couple of citizens. Adams County's got a staff member and a citizen, and then of course, Adams County. So, there's some involvement from Aurora. They want to be at the table, just like I think we would want to be at the table, if there's an outside chance that goes through our city, we want to be able to see what's going on and maybe what they're gonna do.
And I'd like to supplement that, tag on to what Tom said, is that they're probably more protective of being at the table, fear of what could happen. They're also concerned about what they call, turn the bar, call it lane balance. So, as, as the number of lanes come on, we have merge points that if it goes through Aurora, has the appropriate lanes to set the traffic where the merges are. But to give you a perspective too, particularly Matt House, I think we're very cautious about engaging on whether it's the alignment, the realignment, or the widening of I-70. It's more how those all come together, so.
Are they contributing on the fact that what 225 is going to be doing? When they're going to finish widening 225, and how the lane balancing will affect that? Because that's what's going to affect citizens, that's what's going to affect the light rail station. This is, these are things that are certainly about Aurora. They have internal problems they need to be dealing with, and not worrying about what's happening down here on I-70 that's affecting, if they get this stuff in order, then they don't have to worry about lane balancing, because 225 and I-70 going east will be able to carry the traffic that's going to be generated from the increased length. But that's just what I think, and I mean, I would like to go first with this.
Any other questions?
I wanted to supplement, because that lane balance conversation is a very critical conversation that we had today. If you look at the merge between where I-70 and I-70 come together, that lane balance is not there, and the impact of that is, you get a lot of queuing back in. Now you take that merge, and it's happening in the Commerce City area, it is happening up by Bass Quest, and so we've asked for more detailed analysis on that, because we're very concerned about what that looks like. And in our discussions today, they're going to come back and give us more feedback on that, because we just take that choke point and move it back. Now, there was some thought that they had it, had it accomplished, and as we explored more the alternative today, and again, they're at 500% design, so they can improve things, we had that discussion, and they're necking down some lanes, and that concerns us. Okay, where's the queuing going to happen? And then if you have any accidents, where the traffic funnel off onto our larger roadway network? And so, that's, that's the level detail we're getting into on some of these conversations.
And those are going to affect Central Park Boulevard, because Central Park Boulevard will be a many access point going over, and they used to have more accidents where people going through the tunnels, because it seemed like the minute they go through the tunnels, they couldn't drive.
Mr. McClellan?
Just to piggyback on that, one of the points that I recall us discussing, we can't say of our heads in the meeting, but relative to if we realign, what happens to I-70 between the bend and the existing alignment that we touch, I-76, and again, the impact on the queuing, what's going to happen to traffic, whether additional volume of traffic down I-70, I-76, and 36, because you're taking an entire I-70 park around for the north.
That's a very interesting discussion that we've had, both at the PAC meetings and then at the side meetings. If you look at it from a study perspective, they like to limit their study boundaries, but it behooves us to expand that discussion into the water scenario. And one of the questions that we've asked is that they have approved EIS for I-25, I-76, I-70, and the question that we have is, is that in the model? Because if that's not in the model, who would like to see the impact? And our question is, what do those traffic volumes look like and provide that assurance to us? And they're going back and looking to see if it was incorporated in the model. We have now, we asked them if McMonallem runs, or did we go through the Dr. Todd stat and ask for those incorporation? And it's more from sensitivity analysis, because we recognize that we need a boundary study, but we need enough outcomes from a traffic perspective. If you need, if it's what I call, is unrestricted analysis, and all of a sudden it says we need 10 lanes, and we're only building eight lanes, then we want to have that discussion and start getting those projects lined up and advocating with CDOT, with Dr. Todd, with our federal lobbying. So, it's, it has all those attitudes. They don't, they don't know the exact answers to that, we have the exact answers to that, but there's an open dialogue, and I would say there's a willingness to broach that conversation with us.
That's, that's good to hear, because I think that was one of the areas where we've really had to give consideration, and you can't play a closed system, you gotta account for a few. That's good to hear.
Any other questions? If I have a comment. First of all, I'd like to thank both of you for the updated information, and I can remember two and three years ago, even a year ago, how we would go to these meetings and not even be noticed or anything, and we've been taking this a lot more aggressively. And the one, I think, was last November, and the county was in such support of this as well, that was, that was very important. And now we're noticed and respected and listened to. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now go to administrative council business. Does anybody have any of this, anything for this? Mr. Benson?
I think it was last week I brought up that intersection that was very dependent on Highway 2, many further work on the park. Do you have a study of what's in this, on the spectrum? And I've read some other addresses, standing out about Noffles. You know, I think I had, as a result of our last rental property cash wars, we need, or the landlord said he couldn't rent his property because the park, I was trying to meet their side, if they're so bad, nobody would rent his property. I gave those to the rental property, to get their services out there, to get those cleaned up.
Yes, I, I thought I sent an email to you, but let me check, please. I will check, I thought I responded, but.
You know, one of the, what we're dealing with is rental property, people are in businesses on rental property cash wars. We're not trying to deal with unoccupied residences, because we do already have everything on the books that we need. It's just a matter of getting any services. And I'm going to, I'm going to try to get our list from all the landlords that we contact with this rental property cash wars and say, you've got unoccupied properties that are giving you a problem, many of your houses, apartments, give me the addresses, and we'll get on it. So, I expect to get several more in our next meeting on the 16th. That's really all I have.
Is anyone else? Mr. Batum?
Sent out an email, we received two emails from the people at the beginning regarding the city management's meeting review process. Published after the two-week window, and I apologize, those were, those were who have been sent out the week prior to my, the brush, and I apologize, I didn't give those out as planned. So, those have been published, put a two-week window, as we discussed previously of those. So, if you've got any questions or challenges, please look at them. They're kind of different setting of the surveys this time, so last time you had one and done, and you took it, and you awarded at some point, you were essentially, you couldn't go back and retake it. So, you definitely need to try and retake it, I don't know about the work, but it's at least an option, instead of you jumping and trying, and if you need to, try and go back and retake it, just let me know where you're competing for, and check you on. But those are the, you know, the work that's been done, and previous to send out their accomplishments or reviews, if you have those, please go back to the, to the original, and we should get those back, back out.
I would just suggest that you do send those to all of us, instead of each one of us individually asking for it.
I can reach, with you.
Okay. Okay, um, yes, Mr. Moore?
Yes, due to the circumstances of tonight's meeting, I would like to suggest that we do a rotation through the council in the event that the mayor and mayor pro temp, if you would like to serve as mayor, you know, if they are mayor and mayor pro temp on here, you know, there might be some people that don't want to do it, but if we have prior notice, which we should have, that they're not going to be available, work through the council, so everybody gets a chance of leadership position of going in as a mayor. Does anybody have an objection to that?
No, and I didn't know it until after I sat down.
I, I saw that. But in case it comes up again, you know, I would like to see others, take advantage of sitting in as a.
As mayor or whatever. Okay. Mrs. Moreno?
I don't disagree with the concept, I'm just wondering if, at that point, we would maybe be in violation of the charter, considering that it does say in the event of the absence of the mayor and mayor pro temp, that the council elects... of the mayor and mayor pro temp, that the council elects who will run the meeting.
But see, that's what I'm saying. If somebody wanted to do it and the council was agreeable to it, we would elect them.
Right, yeah. So I have no objections, like a general understanding that we'll rotate. But I, I, I mean, I just, uh, in the charter, it says that we should elect, uh, the person that runs the meeting.
Yes, Mr. Gaynor?
Dominic is, is correct that the, uh, that's why I made it clear that the minutes needed to reflect that and get it in a more informal way tonight. She had no objection to, to Kathy's acting as, as the mayor. Uh, but we should, when you decide who is going to do it, we should have a motion and then a vote to actually make it clear the minutes. I mean, it was, it's adequate what we did tonight because there was.
It was expected, so.
Right. It was, um, a passive approval, if you will, and the minutes will so reflect that. But the better procedure would be for an actual motion, a second, and then a vote, and then the minutes properly reflects who, who's appointed. Because the charter does say the council elects the, uh, the acting mayor. So, but that process works, it's just that we have to know what, what your wishes are. And if an emergency arises like tonight, um, then someone can be, um, selected. But I'll make it clear for the minutes that that person is with the consent of the entire council.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, now we'll go forward with reports. Um, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Interim Madam Portemayor. Um, and Council. Um, I have just a few items. Um, one, I wanted to actually mention the idea of the Roseberry, I'm in, uh, communication, council communication, um, and take a look at that. Also wanted to mention, um, that, uh, don't forget tomorrow, 1 to 3, Hometown Heroes, the memorial, um, event down by the Parks and Rec, uh, facility. Um, it should be a really nice event, and I think our mayor and Portemayor have seen that. Um, wanted to mention, uh, I asked Mr. Howard if I missed any of his points, if he wanted me to mention that the meetings will go live once these, these cameras surrounding, uh, are, are up and running. And they go live, they go live two channeling. Because right now we are live streamed, but we have it today on channeling. So they'll go live on channeling when we have all of the cameras on. Is that right? Oh, good, thank you. Um, and then lastly, a couple of, uh, kind of thumbs ups. Uh, our own Brittany Morris has been selected to the Economic Development and the National Trade Committee for the transition for Governor-elect Tatum Cooper. So congrats. And then Brittany and I, I don't know how exactly got, uh, went viral, but, um, our incentive package that you all approved as the council, you saw our article last week, but, um, it's apparently, um, hit some pretty big national, um, journals. And so, um, Ms. Morris and I have been asked to come to Atlanta in December to present to a group of businessmen and, um, planners, city, city, that, um, just the planners. So, uh, that's, that's something that's positive that's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaynor.
I have a couple of things. Um, a couple of weeks ago, the council approved a, uh, amendment to my employment agreement that included, uh, coverage for the health insurance and the dental plan. And, um, we have found and determined that in order to make that happen, there has to be an amendment to the city health and dental plan. Well, to avoid that complication, um, I decided that it would be preferable to ask the council that, um, instead of trying to get me on the city health plan, see, the problem is I'm not working a full 40 hours a week and the health plan requires that as president crafted. So if I were to submit a, an amendment to the agreement that was approved two weeks ago that simply says that the city will pay what it would cost the city if I were on the health plan, and then I would just use that money to purchase my own health plan. From the city's point of view, um, where the city's not outing any funding with that approach, I would just go buy my own health insurance. Um, and the city would be paying what it would anyway if I were on the health plan. So, so I'll be submitting an amendment, uh, on 15th November for that, for that approach. And also because of the time limitations here, if I could get on another health plan, um, I'm changing or asking to change the effective date. We had it November 8th today, which means this week I can start. I'm going to change the end date to December 1. So that gives me more time and from the city's point of view, then I would stay on the full, uh, full schedule until December 1.
Can I, can I comment on that?
Yeah.
How about you and I had a discussion about comparing the city health plan to Medicare.
Right.
And, you know, Medicare has better coverage and it costs a lot less. So I hope that I'll be, will be held in charge.
The downside for me is that when the city pays me directly, that's pre-tax dollars and I pay income tax on that. When I'm part of a health plan, I don't pay income tax, but that's just comes to the territory and we're not going to, uh, split hairs over that issue. So I'll just absorb that.
I don't know that you can get, you can start Medicare until January 1st. Maybe it's just a lie.
I'll have to look into that because, um, that'd make me a complication if I use December 1. But we'll see, rather than take the council's time now and talk further about it, I'll go with the December 1 date, but I'll be checking it out. That'll give me time to check it out. Then the second thing I have to report, uh, I'm going to be visiting my daughter and her family in Baltimore area starting tomorrow. This is a good week to do this because, um, I worked today and tomorrow and Wednesday I'll take vacation. Thursday's a holiday and Friday I take vacation. So that's, um, this week is what I'm going on. And in my absence, then Greg Graham will be acting as, uh, acting city, determining if this hearing is, uh, not available of this right. So that's the latest.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Johnson, you're on the report?
I'm on the report.
Mr. McLeary? Mr. Bor?
Yes, I want to report that, um, I was at the Niantic Health Fair on Cyber Beach from 8:30 to 10:00. And I had never seen that many people at the high school, um, lined up. When I got there, the line was out the door and partially around the building. And I came in and I was, didn't know exactly where to go, so I saw where the vet center was, and they were handing out things for senior information. And so I went over there and stood with them and, um, interacted. And, um, it was just families after families and people and asking me, where is this and where is that? And I don't know where anything is in the high school, but you know, I was telling people where to go. And, um, but it was, it was a great, if Sunday was anything like Saturday, it was an overwhelming success because Saturday was just packed. And when I left, um, then Dominic was standing by the door for even people as they came in. Um, I'm watching people getting out of their cars and everything as I'm leaving, asking me, where do you go and everything. So I know Dominic was busy for the time he was there. Um, that's, so, uh, except for the event tomorrow, but I encourage everybody to attend. That's all my reporting.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moreno?
Uh, I told Maria Carvallo of the Community Business and Professional Association that I would put in a plug for their annual holiday gala. Uh, it'll be Friday, December 3rd, from 6:00 to 9:30 at the Worth County Health Center. Um, all of you following Mr. McLeary to footsteps and seeing, and seeing the event this year. So, um, excited about that. Uh, Friday I had a meeting with Path-to-Africa Humanity, and everyone knows the great work that they do in the heart of the city. And they're actually looking to expand a lot of the services that they offer in Fort Wayne. So I was trying to help them bridge those connections with some nonprofits that operate in our community and kind of looking to what they're looking to do. Uh, they are looking to not only just build homes, but maybe retrofit them, um, to make them more energy efficient, weatherized, uh, particularly for, uh, members of our population who are either elderly or disabled. So that's, that's good news that they're looking to expand the conversation. So that's all.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, thank you. Because last Tuesday I had lunch with John McCutcheon, the acting guy, executive director of I-470, and Joe Donahue, the acting finance director. And we sort of discussed the last, the things that I borrowed last week around speed and the changes of the tiers on pricing. Uh, and various layers and tiers of finance, it was very helpful. And the, uh, directly here is obviously. Thursday, of course, with election day, I want to congratulate the people of this community and the state for voting down 661-101 and 301. That was something that I always very worried about. One of those things I was seeing through. But we will see something like that come back either next year or the year after. Again, a revised move back. It can, you know, work machines up here, no matter what happens out of that group. Sorry. On Friday, uh, we went to the PAM, that's the director of the higher school names and very good to be golden, uh, to go 6-4, which is the first league season in 30 years in five seasons. Uh, in four A, you have 60 teams making it to the playoffs. And I think today, plenty of people for them, that even takes into account, uh, the, uh, the scoring differential, advantages for running the score. So, yeah, I think we came in 7-0. So we just very close to the playoffs this year, but we know, uh, next year, I think we will make the playoffs this year. Uh, on Saturday, of course, it's scum. Oh, Saturday. I was going to say that Texas A&amp;A are beat number eight, Oklahoma, 3-3 that night.
We all, we all cringed on Saturday because we knew Monday nights would come.
My response to that is wait and see who has the best record in seasons eleven.
All right. It may not make a difference, but also, you know, Ms. Nealon's team, Iowa State started down by beating Texas about three weeks ago, then they later beat them last week. And now K-State, it's kind of taken some of the luster, uh, Iowa State. I want to commensurate or commend Iowa State for going for two points against Nebraska in overtime, even though you lost. That was a gutsy thing to do. They lost 31 to 32. Okay. Well, I also looked at the health fair yesterday. And I want to commend, uh, Mr. Cordero for his role in putting that together, coordinating it. So a lot of people there, a lot of people were able to obtain free medical service, you know, blood tests, uh, blood pressure tests, a lot of things that people just can't afford unless they have health insurance. And that's just provided for everybody that shows up at that night health fair. So thank you, Mr. Cordero. That's all. You do that every year. Like, that's all I need.
Thank you. And Ms. Carson?
Well, Jim, I think there is my, well, number of them out. And then I'm going to listen to Pom Pom speaking. I'm going to do it every week, right? Every week, it's here. So I guess it's a long. Anyway, I, first I want to thank the faculty, the, uh, the studies back. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And tell me not to dislike certain people over the table, because everybody looks like they really are set up to be worked. They have books in front of them, they're out on the floor. Um, the tables are just these two rows, and everybody, there's a boot up there. So, um, as Mr. Benson said, I want to thank voters for, uh, doing themselves educated and voting down 661-101. But I also want to thank everybody who works so hard in the health agency, those voters. I know out of our office, uh, how our class by school employees, 1,200 sign, uh, for giving out. And I know it was our class by school employees, uh, who were out there feeding the drugs, telling people what you were going to do to help the education that they've got. So, um, I just want to commend them for their hard work. Sorry that, uh, Pamela, who was voted out, right, uh, for harder, uh, and the nine author, I was there Sunday, and what an opportunity for our budget, uh, the screening that was there. Um, and Ms., you just, you can pure work for us. So thank you very much. And Brittany, thank you for everything that you do. Uh, like I said, we, we all know that everybody, very few are successful. Our prayers are being answered. You're a very young woman, but thank you for everything.
Thank you. I just have two things. Um, Mr. Clemmers, I would like to thank you for trying to remedy that intersection problem on I-60 and I-20. It's a total disaster what's wrong. But I know you're doing what you can do. Um, secondly and lastly, um, I attended the Labor Authority meeting last Tuesday, and I brought up the idea that we cannot navigate away from our, um, not our policies, but our guidelines. And I don't think we're stringent enough. And so we will be having a special meeting with, with the board. And Laura, do we have a replacement yet? For the lady that just, uh, that, um, she doesn't work there anymore?
Not yet.
Or, yeah. Anyway, um, we have too many show cause hearings where establishments are selling to underage, you know, teenagers and everything like that. So we're going to become a stronger board in the future. Thank you. And thank you for letting me serve here tonight. Oh, I don't have the gavel, but one time I wanted it. Where is yours? Thank you.